Back to the meeting, we had a discussion on our collective bargain agreements and where we stand with the police and the DPW. We also heard an update from the police chief on the incident that happened at a school two weeks ago and some security measures that are going on. And then we also had a quick litigation update. There were no votes taken and no action taken. Next up, we have our consent agenda with our bills to pay. We have three sets of bills from 119, 2018, 129, 2018, and 21, 2018. Any questions on the bills? Ms. Pedro.
So, hello. So I notice we're getting salt again. And I'm wondering why we're not using... We built a new salt shed. It's filled with salt. Why is there the salt pile outside of the salt shed? And why aren't we using that? Why are we getting more salt?
It's just sand outside.
That's sand? Oh, okay. It's not salt. Okay, good. Thank you.
That's the state that has the salt outside.
Yeah, I know. But it's not near the brook. That's the whole thing.
Okay. Any other questions on the bills?
Already asked.
Okay. Do we have a motion to receive in place on file?
So moved.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next up, we're sitting at the Board of License Commissioners. First up, we have a request to establish a public hearing to transfer the liquor license, Class BV beverage license from R&amp;M 506 LLC, Doing Business as the Beachcomber, to KW Nelson Incorporated, 506 Park Avenue. This will be just to establish a date to have the public hearing, which, second meeting in March, is what date?
March 12th.
Second meeting?
26th.
Okay. Does the 12th give you enough time? The three weeks to advertise, you want to do it 26th?
26th.
26th, okay. Just to be safe. So do I have a motion to...
So moved on 12th.
26th.
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 Okay. Paul was the motion and Liz was the second, to hold a public hearing for the transfer license on the 26th of March. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have annual holiday license renewals for Walgreens Eastern Company, Doing Business as Rite Aid, at both locations, 3034 East Main Road and 2456 East Main Road.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the holiday licenses?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six, zero, and one, with Mr. Keston recusing because his wife works at both of them, right?
Well, in the past and in the future, I guess.
Hopefully.
Motion to adjourn as the Board of Licenses.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have minutes, any executive session minutes from the meeting of 122, 18. Any questions on the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Mr. President, I have some changes and changes I would like to make, only because we spent probably two hours. And the minutes don't reflect, and they typically wouldn't, what transpired in the meeting. And what I would like to, my proposed changes are this, that we include the financial highlight that was part of the audit package, which I think is page 14. Also include, I think it's page 23, which are the other findings, which were, would be the school and the fund balance, and a couple other facts. And the other couple of facts, Mr. President, are that there was, in fact, a deficit in 2017. And the minutes behind that discussion, I believe, are minutes 73, 74, 76, between Kyle Connors, myself, and you. And at minute 157, it goes 79, 126, 135, 136, 157, which was Mr. Aguirre. At the end of the day, we had a deficit because of shortfall revenue. There weren't very many people that were part of this. But basically, it was discussion between us and the auditors. I think it's important to include that. The second point would be that the 600K was moved from the bond proceeds to the budget without council approval. This is an internal, this is a breakdown of internal controls. And there are minutes at 129, 142, 134, 135, 152. I'm not comfortable transcribing actual minutes. I have on my dial-up what I believe, and I could give this to the...
Why don't we do that? Why don't you forward that information to the clerk?
Right.
Then the clerk can correct them. This council can have opportunity to read through them.
Right.
And then have comments if they had them.
And the fact, the fact that there were two different audits were issued. And the reason I'm doing this one, Mr. President, is in council, in minute 83, you summarized the changes in the two audits, and we're going to get that from the auditor. He agreed, and we haven't seen that report. So there were action items that came out of this. And, you know, again, the fact that there was a problem with the 12 and 13 warrants, I'd like to include those minutes, which is part of the motion that's included in the original minutes. And there was one question about breaking state law, and unfortunately, at minute 141, the auditor was the only one who answered to that question. So I'd like to end what I have, and I'll try to get it to Jennifer in a Word document so she doesn't have to type this all up.
That would be nice.
Because let me tell you, it's a royal pain in the neck.
Well, if you have it in there already, that's Excel. You can just copy the Excel over and she can copy and paste it out of that.
She doesn't write Word documents in Excel. But we'll work on it and get it to her. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right.
You do?
She can copy and paste from Excel to Word.
Yep.
Okay. So you can send it to Excel. All right.
So I want to alter it for four items, but to include the minutes that were on the DVDs.
Pass that all to the clerk so she can put it on the next agenda, so that everybody can have a chance to read through it before we vote on anything.
Absolutely.
Okay. So a motion to table the minutes until...
So moved.
Okay. Next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Madam Clerk, you'll just have to let us know if you don't have enough time. We'll put it on the 12th agenda if you don't have enough time.
I should have it, I should have it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Do we want to vote, are you okay with voting on the executive minutes tonight?
I am.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the executive minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Perfect. Mr. Rayner, Town Administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council, ladies and gentlemen. On the 23rd, Portsmouth Police Lieutenant Mark Mooney conducted a training presentation for town hall employees on how to respond to an active workplace threat situation. And we covered the FEMA recommended training program of Run, Hide, Fight, and how to respond to a workplace violence situation. I extend my appreciation, Lieutenant Mooney and the chief, who has given these presentations to many local businesses, churches, and schools on preparing for active threat situations. It was timely and much appreciated. On the 24th, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns held their annual convention, and most department heads were able to attend. This convention is designed as a showcase event for local government officials, and this year's event featured 18 workshops and seminars, and included participation of over 100 companies, government agencies, and nonprofits. A link to the seminar presentations and the handouts used is available on the League's website. With regard to Facility Condition Assessment Initiative, the way Portsmouth plans for repair and upgrade of town buildings is like most other communities. Information is gathered by departments and included in the town's capital improvement budget, and the department budgets, and a few other spots, but there is limited hard data to back up the true needs. As you are aware, the state recently had consultants, the consultants Jacobs Engineering and Architecture, perform an independent survey of every school building in Rhode Island. I've since teamed up with the Town Administrator in Middletown to explore a way to professionally assess all of our town buildings, not just the schools. This would be a first for Rhode Island, and we hope teaming together can produce savings for such an, associated with the cost of such an assessment. An assessment that will provide us with a roadmap to guide us in making the best decisions about where to spend and what to spend our money on. At this stage, we are preparing a database of town buildings and facilities that will be used to form the basis of a cost estimate for this initiative. No decisions have been made, and of course, it will be up to the council to determine if we should proceed after you've had a chance to evaluate the proposal once this is developed. I'd also like to report tonight that the Fire Department held their first annual awards ceremony at the Glen Manor House on January 31st. The Fire Prevention Education Award went to Lieutenant Andrew Jones for his public education outreach in our schools, local businesses, and apartment complexes. And the Emergency Medical Service Education Award went to firefighter Dylan Miniani for his efforts in making medical, or medication guides for department use and training in operational environments. In addition, years of service pins were handed out to the firefighters who have achieved five, 10, and 20 years of service. The fire chief and I would both like to extend our appreciation to the managers of Glen Manor House, Katie and Don Wilkinson, for their help in setting up this ceremony. In addition, there was another ceremony attended to by our fire chief, Mike Krantz. This was held at the State Rotunda in recognition of storm-ready Rhode Island. Over the last year and a half, the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency, in collaboration with the National Weather Service, has led an effort across Rhode Island to become a storm-ready state. To be recognized as a storm-ready state by the National Weather Service, all cities and towns across the state have to complete a six-point plan to manage severe weather. Portsmouth was able to do this. Portsmouth participated, and thanks to the efforts of our fire, police, Public Works, and our Emergency Management Agency, we were able to join representatives from across the state at the ceremony at the State House Rotunda on February 2nd to celebrate the announcement that Rhode Island is the first state in the country to have all municipalities recognized as storm-ready. I'd also like to announce tonight that the next showing of the Portsmouth Compact will be held here in the council chamber on March 7th between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m. I'd like to recognize and thank the town clerk and the Portsmouth Historical Society for coordinating this event. For those of you that may be unaware, the Compact is a document that was signed on March 7, 1638, and it was the first document in American history that severed both political and religious ties with England and established the settlement of Portsmouth. I'd like to also announce tonight that our new recreation coordinator, Ms. Wendy Balk, is coordinating a school vacation camp during the April 16th to 20th recess. The camp is open to children age 5 to 13 and will be held at the Brown House in the '70s sports complex. Space is limited, and she will coordinate the announcement to parents through our school department. With respect to an update on the Weaver Cove Boat Ramp, last week, we met with representatives from Rhode Island DEM to discuss the boat ramp. DEM initiated the meeting to inform us that there is federal money available for repairs, upgrades, or even replacement of the ramp. They are looking for Portsmouth input and will work with our Harbor Management Commission and our planning officer over the next two to three years to determine the best course of action to upgrade the facility, and I'll keep the council informed as this initiative moves forward. And lastly, with regard to the police building construction milestones since my last report, foundation walls are nearly complete, and easement agreements with National Grid for electric and gas service have been completed. A critical path schedule has been updated and submitted by the contractor that confirms substantial completion of the new building in September 2018, with demolition of the existing building to follow. The contractor acknowledges that they have lost three to four weeks due to winter conditions and an average frost depth of more than two feet. In response, they have resequenced some planned activities, and they plan on increasing manpower to recover lost time. We are still on budget with actual cash flow slightly lower than projections for this stage of the project. Total construction billings to date are slightly over $1 million. The town is withholding 5% retainage per the contract documents, and certified payroll affidavits are current. Structural steel is still scheduled for delivery the week of 26th February, and we should see erection immediately upon receipt. And then over the next two weeks, the work will focus on completion of the foundation walls in preparation for the arrival of that structural steel. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Keston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rayner, on this capital improvement project, we have multiple capital improvement projects in the audit. Is it possible to get this police station broken out separately so we can see the expenditures?
I see no reason why we can't.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Pedro? Anybody else?
Yeah. Can you repeat the Compact showing date, please?
Sure thing. It'll be March 7th.
Okay.
Between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. here in the chamber. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have resignations and appointments. First up, we have an appointment, a new appointment, excuse me, an appointment to fill out a vacancy of a term expiring 6/20/20 to the Quinick Island Planning Commission. We have a motion to accept Mr. Katzman. There was another person who had signed up prior to. She took her name out?
He.
He?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in discussion? Yep.
We had some sort of discussion the last time about the Quinick Island Planning Commission, and I don't have any problems with Mr. Katzman, but I think that this is a position that this council should not be appointing, because this is a private nonprofit. We don't have, we don't appoint people to other nonprofits such as, private nonprofits such as the ALT. And this is, this is kind of a mongrel with all the committees that we have here. So no offense to Mr. Katzman or anybody that wants to be on the Quinick Island Planning Commission, but I think it's a, it's a position that the planning commission should solicit themselves without the council involvement. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the only issue before us is whether Mr. Katzman should be appointed to the board, and that a larger discussion about whether we should be appointing members to the AIPC needs to be a separate agenda item.
And I agree. This is just an up and down appointment for the board. I understand your suggestion.
I should just rephrase it to say I will not be voting for Mr. Katzman tonight because of that reason.
Sure. Okay. Ms. Keston?
Mr. President, not to reiterate what my councilman just said, because it seems like it's not on the topic, but you need to justify why you're not going to vote for Mr. Katzman's position. It's not Mr. Katzman's position. It's because the board's on its own. I made that statement to Mr. Humphries. And I will not be voting it, not because of Mr. Katzman, because I do not believe, as my counsel, former counsel has said, we should be appointing people to this board until this council takes up the position on how it's going to handle AIPC.
I just want to point out that Mr. Katzman's extremely qualified to be on this board. They are in the process of moving through a transition period, and he would be an excellent person to serve.
And he absolutely is.
Okay. Was there a motion and a second? Did I miss? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to three. Next up, we have a reappointment at Bristol Ferry Town Common Committee for Ms. Abigail Brown. A motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have a reappointment for the Glen Manor House Authority for Ms. Karen Menenzi's.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Reappointment for Mr. White at the Melville Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Two reappointments to the Prudence Island Planning Commission for Mrs. Holman, and I believe it's Mr. Snell.
It is Holman, yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have four vacancies on the Solid Waste Planning Committee, and we have one person who has stepped up, and that is, wow, Mr. Sylwacki. I'm going to mess that up. Is that close enough? Are there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have an appointment to the Tax Board of Reviews for Mr. Norbert Rutte.
Move to approve.
Third.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then a reappointment of our tree warden.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Onto old business. We have discussion in action on a Rail Explorers seeking support for sign placement on West Main Road at the corner of Stringham Road and a possible collaboration for future The Rail Explorers. How you guys doing?
Hi, how's it going? Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. We just wanted to let you know and give you a quick update with how our year went, and some news about Rail Explorers and what we're planning. I've got with me Rebecca Knight, Jay Premiano, both who have joined our team full-time since we spoke last year before we opened. We've got a video that I'll sort of start, and I'll just talk over it. But at the end of last year, we finished the end on Halloween. We had 23,500 riders. We had 30 employees, 10 of which are now full-time with us. So that's a huge ratio, and we, I've got to say that we were just so impressed with the caliber of the people that we've met here on Quinick Island. The majority of our employees are Portsmouth-based, all of them within a 20-mile radius of Portsmouth. And we've been so impressed that we've made Portsmouth Rhode Island our world headquarters of Rail Explorers. So, you know, we've got space now full-time at the NEB building. We've got a lease there, so we've taken out full-time space. We, as you can see, this is the Southern Circuit. I'm just going to be, it was beautiful. We redid the whole station entrance to Melville, as well as this beautiful little picnic area at the turnaround at MP4, we call it, this area right there, that Jay had a large, large part of that. So we put a lot of effort in, but we're so thrilled to be here. And now we've just opened a division in Las Vegas, and five of our crew members from Rhode Island are there. It's a group household, three dogs. It did have myself and my other two children, but we, we just came back a couple of weeks ago. So Rhode Island is, and Portsmouth is getting out there in the world and in the organization of Rail Explorers, where we had, I think, a big economic impact in Portsmouth regardless of just Newport. We found that we had a lot of unique visitors that just came for Rail Explorers and just came to Portsmouth. We had a lot of rack cards that tried to display as many things to do in Portsmouth and in the neighboring towns. And one of the things is we'd love to really work with you all to try and get as many people and businesses involved with getting it out there that Portsmouth is no longer just a way to Newport, it is a destination in itself, because people really want the authentic experience, and, and they, they love Portsmouth. There's no hassle with cars, parking, there's no problem at all, and they just can't wait. They want more. So if there's anything we can do to publicize that and to work on better signage, especially coming in over the Tiverton Bridge or even the Mount Hope Bridge, to say, hey, you're in Portsmouth. And if there's some brochures that you would like to work with us on, one of the things that, I'll just get Becky to go to now, is the, oh, I'll do the geotag map first, that's an interesting one. This was a list of ZIP codes that we collected of where our riders came from. It's not every single rider, because some riders are like, they're just grouped, so there could have been 200 from ZIP code, you know, 0271. And, yeah, so that's sort of the big picture, and then we can zoom into the Northeast, and, you know, they're the sort of, you know, demographics that we got a lot, were a lot closer than we thought as well. So this is information that Portsmouth and the Portsmouth Business Association could use. And again, they're wanting to do things here. One of the other things that we're, oh, so pleased about is that on top of our employment, that we've really, you know, it's beyond my expectation of how many people we've employed, we've got another 10 that all want to come back. You know, we had two, three people in their late 60s that worked with us this year. They were retired and from Portsmouth, and they're all coming back. So the stratosphere of ages that worked with us this year, from pregnant, we had two guides that became pregnant, not, not because of what they did, but they just did in their family life, and so now they're mothers, and they're going to be coming back. And then, you know, so it's really been a big boost, I believe, to, to your local economy, and it highlights the sort of caliber of people that you have here. We'd love Portsmouth and the community to help clean up and work with us on initiatives that we're trying to do along Stringham Road, not the corridor so much, because we've really done a lot of cleaning up on that. But if there's some ways that we can keep you updated, maybe in the next month or so, we're also working with the group from NEB and from that whole boats yard area, and they're really willing to put in whatever it takes to make this a community and a precinct that Portsmouth can be proud of, regardless of Navy Land or not Navy Land. There's a lot of businesses that you've got there that are Portsmouth residents that would like you to embrace the precinct down at Melville as a new up-and-coming area. So I think that's just really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
In terms of the request for the sign, it's a state road and Navy property.
Yeah.
So we don't, other than following along with our relative sign ordinances and working with the planner and the zoning department to keep it within town specs, approval for that would have to go through the state and probably the Navy.
Okay. And so is there anything that you want to, are there any signage that maybe Portsmouth want to put up that can lend any weight to whatever we want to do, or can we talk about that, or there's nothing?
It's just, follow along, you can work with Gary and Mike in the planning office to follow along our sign guidelines. If you go around town, they're pretty much, they're all wood.
Okay. All right. That's terrific. No, but we look forward to hosting, I'm handing this over quickly to Jay Premiano, who's been doing community outreach. He's just come from the library where Portsmouth Historical Association had a presentation. We now have published these books, which every rider gets, which again, is just concentrating on what's, some of the historical facts and interesting things about Portsmouth. So, but thank you, the community has been supportive. We're humbled by our welcome here, and, you know, we're loving it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a few comments, but one thing that I think is pretty interesting is that folks, and this comment was prevalent, folks would arrive, they'd ride the rails, and then they would suggest that, is there anything else to do around here? So Portsmouth has become a destination for many people that aren't necessarily interested in Newport. Portsmouth is a happening place, and I'm really pleased to be part of this. We're reaching out to the school systems because there's a rich history along the rail, and certainly, I just attended this session most, just a few minutes ago. It was a powerful program about the Battle of Rhode Island. John Kennedy was trained at Melville. The Old Colony Rail started in 1860, so there's this rich history that we can bring to the students, not just from Portsmouth, but from the state of Rhode Island, and we're getting some groups to come in and to, to study the environment as well, to, to do some creative studies and poetry writing at those beautiful sites along the rail. So we're really pleased at that initiative. We're reaching out to senior groups. Seniors like to ride the rails. This is not a gender-specific or age-specific activity, so we've got the seniors riding the rails, and those groups are coming forward as well. And we have a partnership with the Rhode Island Recreation and Parks Association. So those three initiatives this year are bringing more people to your town to enjoy this new fun activity that you can only do in Portsmouth, Vegas, and soon in Phoenisha, New York. We're partnering with the Maha Center, and we're employing members of their employee pool, so we're really excited about that. And we're, we're partnering with the Historic Association as well, so thanks for your time, and we look forward to working with this council and councils in the future.
Anybody have questions for Dr. Rail? It's an easy pedal, so any, all ages can do it. It's, you're not going uphill or downhill or...
It's opening day this year?
May 12th. May 12th, yes. So we're opening May 12th, and it is an easy pedal. I'll give you one little bit of history here. In week two, we had this relatively rainy spring, if you recall. We had a ninety-six-year-old man and his seventy-two-year-old daughter ride the rails. The following week, he came back with his grandchildren, and they rode the rails again. In the third week, he came back with seven members of his family, and they rode twelve miles. So this is for everyone, and it is for families as well, so.
If you come up the podium, you can ask a question from here, and get them.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lorienzo. I live at 148 Thayer Drive, and I live on a property that the rail goes through. I have property on both sides. And while I don't want to be a killjoy, they are so noisy. And I would ask the question, is there something that can be done to soften the noise? They're actually louder than the train.
Okay, sorry, hi. I'm sorry about that and the inconvenience it's caused you, and you're not being a killjoy. It's, I think there can be ways, if you can give our crew your address so that we can look at it. The faster the rail bike goes, the louder the steel is on the tracks. One thing that we found, though, at the end of last season, is we took the wheels off half the track, off half the fleet, and re-turned them on a lathe to make them, you know, perfectly circular again, so that they weren't so, any divots, it's another noise. And we found, now that they're in Vegas, they're riding a lot softer. Also, what we're doing is, and this is something we've been able to do in Vegas, now the, the heat, it's perfect conditions for reconditioning the bikes, is also the deck is steel, and that also resonates on the steel frame. So what we've been doing there is putting in like another twenty or thirty steel welds onto the deck, so you don't get so much rattling and clanging along the way. And that also lessens the noise. We actually had a comment from Josh, one of our crew member, saying that rail bike number two is just silent now. So I, I'm really hoping that that is, you know, not that, that may address all your concerns, but we feel there were some physical, technical issues that were making them louder than they should have been. Also, this year, half the amount of tours will go north, so straight away, you'll have half the tours going north. Where every day now, instead of having four tours a day go up to Portsmouth, and four tours, oh, two tours going up and two tours coming back in the spring, it'll just be one tour going up, one tour going down, and then the other two tours will be down towards the Navy Basin back. And that will be every day. So that's going to halve your impact straight away.
So I'd like to ask, how can we be assured that whatever you did to car number two is going to be done to all the cars? Because when I'm in my house or on my deck, you can't, I can't even converse with somebody the way I'm talking right now. You can't hear me, we can't hear each other, but that loud. And I actually timed it once last summer, and for six minutes, I could hear it coming, it was in part of the property, I could hear it going. It was six minutes that we could hear this clanging, and then another car comes, so, I mean, that's constant. I, I think it's great that people are enjoying it, but we are not. And we've been living there for twenty years, and even the other neighbors along our street have all said, this is just not what we thought.
Well, I'm sorry that you didn't come up to us last year, so we could have...
I think no problem with that last year until this term.
No, but I mean, during the season, I would have liked to have known and addressed it and seen what we could have done back then. But thank you for raising the issue. If we grab your address, we're doing all these renovations now to the bikes, and it's not so much as, you know, you don't need an assurance, it's just we're doing that to make ourselves better.
Is there a way to put rubber on the...
No, because the steel on the steel is actually the way that you actually can move without any exertive effort. Yeah.
And I don't understand how that can be quiet.
Well, it's just the rattling and the trueness of the circle. So the more honed you are, the less interruption and the less bumps on those tracks you're going to have. But I think what you could do is if we grab your address, that we can get together with the neighbors, and we'll just do our best to communicate that. But thanks for bringing that up, appreciate it, thank you.
148... Sorry, did you...
Ms. Vader.
Nancy Lorienzo.
Did you say that you've implemented these changes for the, for the year coming?
Yeah, this, um...
On all of your cars, or just...
Yes, no, they're all out in rail, in Las Vegas right now, and they're all getting worked on right now.
So it's going to be different this year?
Yes.
The noise will be different this year?
Yes, we believe so.
Okay.
And also, there's only going to be half the amount of tours that go up north.
Okay.
So on two fronts, that's...
And I'm sorry, you introduced Mr. Premiano.
Jay.
Jay, yeah, but you didn't give your name, could you give your name?
Oh, Mary Joy Lou.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the owner, sorry.
Does that, current, for now, does that satisfy you? They will, if, if, if you don't have a conversation with them, let us know. Call, call Mr. Rayner, we, we'll make sure that gets facilitated.
I do have one other question.
Sure.
How much revenue does this bring to our town? Has anybody talked about that? We came in a few minutes late, maybe we missed that.
We didn't talk specific revenue, but if you want to talk about, we, and because it's only been one year, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can figure out how much ancillary income is brought to the town.
Straight away, there's a $400,000 payroll that's gone into this town, that citizens and workers and community members here are taking home every year. Then on top of that, we've just been actually, subject of a study by the West Virginian government that asked to do a study on Rail Explorers, and we have a feasibility study of the economic impact that we would bring to a community. So we can, you know, we can probably share that with you once I get permission, and that actually has an economic impact multiplier effect to the sales that we brought in, so we can share that with you as well.
Well, I can say for the moment, I'm optimistic that you're going to be able to address the noise, and if it becomes something that detracts from our, highly enjoying our property, I'll have to come back.
Okay. Clear. Yes, sir.
Joan Vegas, 259 Sprague Street. I had a question about access for the disabled, ambulatory disabled people who can't pedal. Has that ever been addressed? Is there a plan to address that?
Do you have, somebody who, somebody who can't pedal themselves, somebody can pedal for them, right?
Okay, we've had, we had about twenty families this year that rode with us with people in wheelchairs, and what we do is, we know that beforehand through, they either usually call or, I'm not sure what, call or write it in the document that you can put online. So with the wheelchairs, often we bring them up to the level crossing, that we've got a wooden crossing at the depot, and our guides then help them on, or the families help them onto the bikes. There are two issues here, one whether or not they have upward stability, in which case they need a full-body harness, so that's like a five-point harness that we can put on them with Velcro straps. Otherwise, if it's just a matter of moving them onto the bikes and they can sit, then they're fine, because all rail bikes have seat belts. We then put that, the wheelchair either back in their car, one of our crew mems drives the car to the end of the line, so that when the trip is finished, we'll be able to move them comfortably straight back into their wheelchair and then into their own vehicle. Our bathroom, we also have ADA bathroom that is fully compliant, so that facilities are available at every location for bathrooms. One of the things that we want to do and the plans are to have a completely flat-deck rail bike, and also one, we've been contacted by the Veterans Association, and they're helping us work with getting hang cranks. I don't know if your partner has or friend has, you know, mobility with their hands, but a lot of vets, you know, have lost their walking ability, but they can still have upper body strength, so they want a hand crank. And there's an organization that goes around cycling with hand cranks. So as we grow and get capital, at the moment, everything's just gone into, you know, building the station, building the business, but as we grow and we actually have some capital, that's where the money is going to go, because our, our, our real love is to make this available for all abilities and all ages. Yeah.
One more question.
Hi, I'm Paul Lorienzo. I live at 148 Thayer Drive, Portsmouth. Just a couple of questions. Is this business located in Portsmouth?
It is now.
One Marathon, Marathon Drive at NEB.
Oh, okay, good. And you heard my, better half, my wife speaking earlier about the noise. My hearing isn't quite as keen as Nancy's is, but it's...
No, I mean, I'm...
But the question I have is, is the, the track is pretty uneven, this track, and I'm not sure you're going to have the same success rate on this track as you may have had in other places. Is that the cause of the noise, or the bouncing, bouncing causes noise and the rattling?
I think it's just some of, all the, all the wheels on the rail bikes are cast solid steel, and if there's any defect in those casts, it will just exacerbate over time. So half the fleet that we're using here, we used for two years in the Adirondacks, and that was a crazy, crazy uneven, old, old track.
Like this one?
No, this one is actually not too bad. It's at least, it's, it's a very even track relatively, there's a lot of jointed rail. So what we're doing is, we hired a local company in Nevada, and what we're doing is returning all the wheels, so that they're true circles, and so they haven't been, you know, if any imperfections are getting smoothed out. And then there's a metal plate that sits on top, that when we originally got the rail bikes, they only had tack welds in about eight paces, right? So over the time, those tack welds come out, and for our, our guides that ride on them every day, when they start coming undone, it becomes really loud for them to be on the bike. So what we're doing now, and what, you know, my husband, who's in Las Vegas at the moment, is doing is welding, they all just got taught how to weld instead of waiting around for a welder there, and they're welding the plate of the plate, the steel plate to the frame of the bike, and that's causing it to be so much more quieter.
Okay. I guess we're going to find out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I wish we could have, you know, got together last year on this earlier, I wish you'd come to the depot, but we're really sorry about the inconvenience, and we'd love to work with you to make sure that it can be manageable. No worries.
Any, what else, questions? Ms. Gleason.
Not a question, but just a suggestion that perhaps you would consider posting some signage at both ends of the track with the Portsmouth Restaurants, working through our Portsmouth Business Association, if in fact people want to stay in Portsmouth.
Absolutely. Over here.
Thank you.
Just, just for example, the Gulfstream gave us, she, they just printed up little 10% discount cards, and their business last year in 2017 had 30% more in revenue. So, you know, it's a lot of people to drive out there, and we were just so busy just running the business, we're hoping this spring before we open, that we'll go out and do the outreach as to make sure that people, you know, after our first year, you never know what's going to happen, but I think people really can drive a lot of good in this community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for the update. We hope you have another successful season this season.
Thank you.
Old business number two, we have a request for approval for Prudence Island Mill Creek Culvert Engineering Services. Mr. Woodhead, how are you?
Good, how are you, yourself? Thank you.
I'm well.
Council President, Member of the Council. We did get awarded the DEM grant for $433,200 from DEM, the Mill Creek project, restoration project. I'm here to request to award the contract to VHB for Engineering Services for the restoration of the Mill Creek project. We still have left in our capital improvement fund minus the Broadway that we saw outstanding of $237,948.82. So after we take the 107 from VHB's Engineering Services for the Mill Creek Restoration, that will leave us $130,948 left over in the capital improvement fund.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Woodhead on this?
I'll make a motion to approve, and I want some discussion.
Okay. Is there a second, a discussion?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Kessin.
Mr. President, it appears that we're $51,000 short, or $52,600 short of the target estimated cost of the $592,800.
That was just the expert at VHB.
Again, I went back through my package, and I couldn't find how that number was determined. Was that an engineering?
That was the engineering number they used to throw up the grant for VHB.
And who supplied that number?
VHB did.
VHB? Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Woodhead.
Ms. Gleason.
Yes, I didn't see any other quotes with this, so how do you justify the amount of $107,000 as a sole source?
Well, this would just be an extension of VHB's contract, because VHB was our, our contractor for the Narragansett Improvement Project, and also the Broadway Project over on Prudence Island, so this would just be an extension of that contract.
And that passes any state...
Yeah.
You're, that's my only concern, is that it affects the requirements of the state bidding process.
Well, the way it was presented to me, I mean, this was sort of an offshoot of the whole Prudence Road Construction Project. That's what we did for, for Broadway. As it was explained to me, this is sort of another offshoot of the same project, in that, you know, for engineers, you go out for requests for qualifications, it's not a, it's an hourly rating, you get rank them, you know, based on qualifications. It seemed, based on the information, that this is sort of tied in to the, to the project we started for the Prudence Road Improvements. So in that base, that would be the justification for modifying their contract rather than starting from scratch with a new, with a new RFQ.
I would just question, Mr. Menke, you feel comfortable with it as well?
Uh huh. I do.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions for Mr. Woodhead? Ms. Vader?
This says the Riedem Grant is 25% match.
Correct.
So we have to...
We have to come up with a 25% match, what?
Right, so we have to come up with 25% of $592.
No, the 4, the 43320, the 4, $433,200.
Oh, I see, yep, yep, yep.
We're already pretty close to that, but we just have that extra $130,000. When we do go out to bid for construction, just in case those numbers do go above, we saw that little money left over in the contingency.
Right, that's what you were talking about.
And that money will come out of this grant?
The construction's all going to come out of the grant side. The engineer will come out of our side, out of the capital improvement, so then the grant side will be all the construction part of it.
And we have confirmed that that engineering money can be used to apply to the 25% required match.
Yeah, I already talked to Jay Manning, and I'm having a meeting with him on Thursday also.
Any other questions? Hey, all those in favor of approving the award?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Woodhead. New business number one. Proposal for a new sign at the Turnpike Entrance to Portsmouth High School. The Portsmouth Student Council. So we've all figured out that the reason that this is not happening is because Mrs. White retired, right? So nobody's going down there to change the sign anymore? Is that how this works?
It's still being changed, now it's by Mrs. White. So, good evening, my name's Lexi Mayo, and I'm on the executive board of the Portsmouth High School Student Council. With me are other members of the Student Council, and our advisor, Mrs. Asna. So we're here today to present about a sign and community, a sign for the community and for the high school. So these are examples of what signs that we would look at. We haven't decided on a final design yet until we know the parameters that we have to work with, but these are examples that we're looking for. We're looking for an LED sign, so having electric text on it, instead of having somebody go down to the sign, walk all the way down the one-way to change the letter manually, it would just be an electronic thing. So these are examples, and once we know the parameters, we will work on a final design with the company. And as we said before, this would be at the end of Turnpike Ave, right before the entrance onto 24.
So there are numerous benefits to having an electric sign versus what we currently have. It would be much easier for us to update and to keep more like up-to-date information. No one would have to go walk all the way down the one-way, especially in the cold winter, and change it. And it would also just look nicer as our school, like we always want to keep it looking modern and nice. And most importantly, it would just give more information to not only students at the school, but the community about different events going on, and open it up to a lot of different people to come and attend many different things that our school offers.
So there's a wide variety of uses for this sign. It can be used for amber alerts, police announcements, water bans and parking bans. The sign is also going to be accessible by phone, so if the police department had access to that, they can make changes and have things on there that is needed to inform the community. Also, the sign is going to be used to advertise upcoming games or theater club performances, like upcoming performance of Footloose or band performance, recent performance at the Berkeley Jazz Festival.
So the cost of this new sign would cost about $31,000. And so far, past the last couple of years during Student Council, we have raised around $12,000 to put towards that. To reach our goal, we hope to get funds by continuing to fundraise individual donors and possibly the school committee.
So our questions for the Town Council and the town of Portsmouth are, what are the regulations for having this kind of sign on a school property, which is also town property? We know there are ordinances out there about having moving text on an LED sign, but we are just not sure how they would apply to a school. And what other steps do we need to take to ensure that this can happen in a timely manner?
This is where I turn it over to our former chairman of the zoning board to answer these questions, so. Vice President Aguirre will answer all these. But there are regulations against lit signs in town.
Yes, but the, the town is exempt from the ordinances. But what you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gavin, you have to be careful for the unintended consequences. If we were to allow this, down the road, developers, other people could use it against us and say, well, you allowed a lit sign at the high school. So although I'm not opposed to the sign, it could probably be something that would require some, you know, probably some review. We'd have to look at maybe hours of when the sign would be lit. It is residential over there, so I think the only signs that are lit, that are messaging type signs, that required a special use permit, were the ones at the Cumberland Farms gas station. I think...
Cumberland Farms and there's a bank that has the, the time of day and the temperature.
People used to have them, but they changed that sign out.
Patriot Petroleum has one too.
Patriot, does, does theirs change though, or is it just lit constant? Because the...
It's less constant, but I think they've got stages they can light it at.
Yeah. So it, I don't know if it's a design review board that could weigh in on the character of the sign.
I think that if you were to follow the ordinance, I saw on your examples, there are some very specific requirements. Now, as Mr. Aguirre said, the town is exempt, but we have to be very careful about granting ourself exemption. So if you see any signs here, it looks like you have some oscillating lights in the background. I'm assuming that that's probably a flag that waves in the back. And in the second sign, you have multiple colors. These are things that would have to go through, probably go before the design review board because those are prohibited in our town ordinance. They have to be one color. They cannot distract drivers and there can be no flashing and there's probably a couple other things in the ordinance too. But it's not impossible.
Mm-hmm.
It is, so electric signs are not prohibited in our ordinance. There are just some things that you'll have to follow. And we'll get you the link to that, but the other things that you would want to adhere to is be cognizant of the residents. You know, it can't be too bright and then probably, as Mr. Aguirre said, hours of use. But there's nothing that prohibits your project in the ordinance right now.
It's all in the zoning regs. But again, based on the zoning regs, it's not allowed, so there's really not a lot of standards for, for what the signs could be. It might be the size of the sign, but if you kept it to the size that's out there now, I mean, there's already a sign that you're looking to replace it. I think the big thing will be the, probably the lighting, the type of lighting, so, and maybe that's where you want to look at. A little research on, you know, what, you know, what's out there from an LED perspective for the message signs. I would say you probably want to avoid the real bright, you know, the real bright lights or the, you know, the flag, you know? If you think about just for the information purposes, you can probably come up with something that, but I don't know who would sign off on it, you know, because it's exempt. I mean, just bringing it back to the council.
Well, it's exempt, but it would, it would ultimately come back to you.
Yeah.
All right.
I can work with you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
But, Mr. Kessin?
Is there a sign that they make that you can actually project onto a white surface or a gray surface?
It would project from behind, probably.
No, I'm saying this way, so that the light would, it would not be the typical lit sign that you see.
I mean, there's, there's different types of light.
I don't see an example.
But you're going to want the message from both sides.
Right. So you'd need a projector in both, you'd have to put up, you know, a brick sign. Again, I don't think that that would be bad, but you'd project onto a board from lenses or LCDs on the side.
Yeah, and that's something we as a student council can definitely look into.
You can.
I think just one of the chief concerns with that, we'll just have to make sure the weatherproofing. And if it snows a lot and those get covered up, we just have to, would find a way to make sure that people can still see the signs, especially when it snows and there are parking bans and stuff like that.
I think what gets complicated is, is there power out there, Brian?
Yes. There is power.
It's an illuminated, it's an illuminated sign now, so there's power there.
Yeah, but they just put Wi-Fi.
It was originally designed to be tapped into the power, but I don't think there's any yet. So that's kind of, that's, this is, this is step one. So before we go further.
Yeah, we, we're under the impression that there's power run out to there, so we'll verify that for you.
If there is, that's fantastic.
All right. So first step would be to come up with a design.
Okay.
Research your signs. And I don't know if you can bring back samples that we could see here. Now, we'll have to do some research into terms of thinking about the hours of, of use.
Right.
And we'll go from there. Ms. Vader?
Yeah. I, I'm glad to see you guys working on this, but I'm not a fan of electronic signs. I'm really not. I, I'm concerned about the neighborhood especially. I mean, we've already got two, two other items on the agenda of neighbors complaining about things like this. I don't see, you know, I mean, talking about easy to update, I mean, it's good for somebody to go walk down there and change that sign. Walking is good for you, you know, and it's good for your heart, it's good for your brain. Why can't we get some student volunteers to go down there and change that sign?
You're not going to put one thing on the sign.
Well, that's...
There's a lot going on.
That's fine, you know? I mean, that's okay. That's more walks, you know?
I think...
And, and as far as, you know, community announcements, we have, we have a flashing sign at the top of Quaker Hill at the police station. We have a board, a message board at town hall. We already have those kinds of things. So, but if you, if you are, are really set on an electronic sign, perhaps some of you could get together and maybe do a senior project with a solar operated sign.
We've looked into solar operated signs and I don't remember the exact pricing, but it was significantly more expensive to get a solar powered sign. And back on the comment about having like students replace it, we're not allowed to leave the building during the day, so we wouldn't be able to replace it. I mean, I wouldn't mind walking down there and doing it, but at any given time, we do have like five different things going on at the school and only being able to project one, it's kind of like who, who gets the short end of the straw? So I think this, while like it is electric and we understand the concerns about the community and maybe we wouldn't use it at night, I think it would give us the opportunity to inform the community more about the schools going ons, as well as some community stuff because some people might not see the one on a quid neck or stuff like that because like it's a different end of Portsmouth. So it's just, we're just trying to expand our options as a school.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes, thank you. I just want to pass on my comments too. I noticed the sign on a regular basis pulling onto that ramp there. I noticed there hasn't been anything on it for quite some time, actually. And we have a sign, similar sign in Comethance Point that's changed daily. Somebody goes out there and changes those letters on there. While it wouldn't be a student function, I don't think it would be unheard of to ask the maintenance staff for the school who drive by there on a routine basis to change that on a routine basis. And I think the problem that we'll see, you would see in the zoning law is a sign that's continuously changing and giving different messages on a repetitive basis because I think that's part of why the signs are not allowed. So it could be changed, in my opinion. I like the sign that's there. I know it's been hit by a car at least once. So I'd hate to see a $31,000 sign be taken out by a car in the future. And I think the solar could be as simple as not powering the sign, but having a solar light shining on the existing sign. I think it could be modified. But thank you for all that you're doing with this project. Just my two thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, I forgot who mentioned, whatever...
Up to the mic. Mr. Arsenal, you just step closer to the mic, don't we? The wonderful people at home can hear you.
Wonderful. I'm not sure who mentioned it, but there's, I guess there's some, some regulations that you, you would like us to adhere to. So as we go forward doing some research, who do I get in touch with as far as those?
We'll forward it out to you tomorrow morning.
You would work, you'll have the zoning information, but you can get ahold of Mr. Crosby or Mike up in the E.S. planning office.
Okay.
Have those regulations, zoning regulations.
Great.
Okay? And then, once you have a little bit more evolved plan, come back to us and let us know.
Sure.
All right. Lexi, David Grayson, Ben, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, no, no action on this yet, but once you guys have something that's a little bit more concrete, come back and see us.
Right. We wanted to make sure we had an inkling of hope.
There's an inkling of hope.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business number two. Requesting ordinance regarding snow removal and ice mitigation on town sidewalks. Ted, are you here? Ted is not here. I didn't think I saw him walk in. Mr. Gavin, we don't have a town ordinance. There are, are there state ordinances that, we don't really have town sidewalks, we have state sidewalks.
Well, there are very few sidewalks. I, I was trying to think of a neighborhood that had sidewalks. I don't think, I can't think of many.
There aren't any in neighborhoods.
Bristol Ferry.
Bristol Ferry Estate, what, East Main State, West Main State?
Park Avenue.
Park Avenue Estate.
Willow Lane.
Willow Lane?
Education Lane, Education Patriot.
Mr. President, this, this, I have a big problem with this. And this also says, "And in all streets where there is no curbstone set, a pathway at least four feet wide shall be made." That's like, I mean, we're not Newport. In Newport, they've got like 20 feet that they have to clear. I mean, most people's yards are like 50 feet. And I have a yard, I've got like 26, 9, I've got, I've got more than 100 feet. I don't even have a sidewalk. And this, I mean, Mr. Gavin, is this...
It's a policy decision.
No, is, am I reading this correctly? "And in all streets where there is no curbstone set, a pathway at least four feet shall be made." Like, so even if you don't have a sidewalk? Is that what that means?
I think it, let's see.
I can't even believe that.
Read under the snow removal.
Yeah.
908-110.
Well, if we did one, we would have to follow the language of this. I know Middletown has an ordinance as well. Again, they have commercial areas.
I just cannot see more ordinances and more burdens on homeowners, more cost, I mean, to people that are already burdened. I don't think so.
I, I think what we can do is table this until Mr. Peets can come back and argue his point.
What I would like to do is test somebody with something.
Sure. Specifically on his order.
How do you feel, Brian? Feel good tonight? The Middletown's doing it with the, with your mowing, your mowing tractor with an arm, they mount the snow blower.
Yeah, that's awesome.
They have an Alamo, normal, you have Tiger, I don't know if Tiger has a...
Is there one available? Would you look into that?
I can look into that.
Will we take that as a task?
Yep.
Mr. Gleason?
I would think it's, another thing to look in is whether the state should be doing the sidewalks on those streets that have been mentioned. I know we still have people from Anthony House that walked down to Clements Market where there are some sidewalks and we didn't have as much snow this year, but there have been times that they've, they've had to resort to walking on East Main Road. So that's not a good situation.
Yeah, that's a state road, though.
That's what I mean. Somebody should look to see whether the state should comply with, have any rules to comply with.
I don't think Middletown's doing East Main Road through the Christmas tree shop through Wyatt Plaza. And they're doing it with the, with this snow blower I just asked Brian to look into. But I don't think it's a state, I don't think it's a town ordinance. And I'm not sure anybody does state roads. They all, in cities, you know, they're not going to plow 40 feet of road in your driveway every three minutes. Take that, take it on every mailbox they put up since Clements to 24 every, every year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest we do table this because Mr. Peets, I really respect his, his desire to address some kind of safety issue and even though the ordinance he's suggesting is likely way too broad, it makes sense to give him a chance to maybe discuss with staff his specific safety concerns and maybe narrower responses to it and discuss this at another meeting.
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. New business number three. Resolution to noise and flicker problems with, two, excuse me, two nearby residents caused by the wind turbine. Mr. Souza? How are you?
My name is Dave, my name is David Souza. I live at 25 Lowell Drive in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I have lived here all my life. I've been a resident here all my life. I love living here. My kids grew up here, went to Portsmouth High School, Middle School, Hathaway School. The turbine, the flicker from it and the noise to the residents in the neighborhood, it's just getting unbearable, this, this, this sound. I mean, I have my own decimeter. I've been out there at 2:00 in the morning because it had woke me up. I am a firefighter. I need to get my sleep and, excuse me, my throat's a little, and it's now starting to affect my job. I'm tired and stuff like that. I'm trying to bring it to light of what's happening and it's also now, because of the height and under, under what you guys discussed and with the company of Wind Energy, they said it would not, flicker would not change. The response from Mr. Gleason, it was your question about, to Mr. De...
Pasquale.
Pasquale. Stayed that they would not change the flicker because of the new tower height. As you can see in the, in the pictures, and I only brought a few of them because I wasn't going to overwhelm people, that's, that's inside my house. That's me trying to watch TV.
What is, what is your exact location?
25 Lowell Drive.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. De Pasquale to come up for a few minutes because we had discussions about being able to limit the downtime and shift things around due to sun angles and all that fun stuff. What we've been told is this doesn't happen to you all year, it's certain times.
Oh, no, no, it's at certain times.
Right. It's not all year, but it...
And the longest I have timed it, the longest time I have had with it is almost an hour and a half.
Okay.
I mean, sometimes it's only like 20 minutes, 40 minutes, but just picture being in your house, enjoying, relaxing, and trying to watch. Now, I have provided my house with blackout curtains with the fabric, with, it's like a plastic on the back. Also, I have a second curtain in a store adjacent.
Right.
Okay, back, you're going to excuse me because I would jump around, okay? But on the ordinance that I found in the town, ordinance 257-1, excessive noise, which this thing does excessive noise, but it's a constant noise. It doesn't quit. Just picture, all right, me coming in your back, in your neighborhood, with my leaf blower at 2:30 in the morning, keep it under 50 decimals, and run it all night.
Right.
How would you, how would you feel? That's why, I want you guys to understand where I'm coming from with this, that, yeah, sometimes I'll sleep all night. It won't be bad. Other times, I'm up, I have called the Port Police because that's what I was told, they have came out there, they have done readings. I have, from the Port Police, the first thing the policeman said to me was, man, as soon as I got out of the car, I could hear that thing. And he, and put it on his report and stuff, and us and residents shouldn't have to put up with this. When I bought my house 20 some years ago, I didn't have a wind turbine. I was not affected, and most of these people here probably the same way, they feel the same way. Why should we have to put up with this? And this is, this is on, I don't know if you can get back to that one.
That was going across the bridge on Spread Street, yeah?
Spread Street?
Yep.
Now, this is a big concern of mine, because we have students that walk and stuff, and you have elderly people driving. I'm not trying to say they're bad drivers, but you know, some, this could distract them, and someone could be-
A child with seizures.
And it's a person with seizures, and stuff like that. And I have done research, and, well, they go, sorry, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. I have had research done by other people, because I was trying to get everything, and they have done a fantastic job, all the things from blades coming off, ice build up, if ice gets on them, we have not had that trouble, thank God, but if it, ice does build up on it and that thing spins, it can shoot up to a mile and a half. It's a projectile. I don't want to see that come to my house. I'm not that far from that place. And I don't think any of the other residents, but you know, that, that's something that may never happen. I'm not trying to, what they call, it may never happen, but it's a possibility. Just like me coming leaving here today, going home, and bang, somebody hits my car. I wasn't expecting it, but it could happen. Now, I understand what they call, and I couldn't find nothing on it, and it may be because it says, you guys did a study on the fall zone.
Wind Energy did, on the fall zone for the, if it fell over?
Yep.
Yep.
Now, I was, I was up there just, we have the water tower, we have the power lines that feed the island there. We have 24. We have Spread Street, and we have the residents, and we have the school. And the other thing I have also is recommendations on not to be putting it next to a school, because I think it can cause children to have seizures. We have kids out there, they're playing football, baseball, and stuff like that. I just think it was not what we signed up for. And, and the well, and welfare and the, and the quality of life for the residents is not, is not there. I think something has to be done, and I don't think it's a tough thing. They know when it flickers. I have talked to them. "Oh, yeah, we know when it flickers." "Well, then shut it down. Shut it down for 15, 20 minutes." That's an easy thing to do. And then, you won't, you won't have guys like me coming up here and saying, "Yeah," or calling you up and saying, "Hey, that stupid wind turbine, I care." And I don't want to be calling the police. I stopped calling the police, because I think it's a waste of police department to come out there with a meter and go, "Oh, yeah, that's making a lot of noise." Yeah? But it's probably, it's within decimals and stuff. But understand, decimals travel. My house is an L shape, and it comes just like this. My bedroom's here, my bedroom's here, and it just comes there and stops. I mean, it just, what they call it? And I have, what they call, but I didn't put it on here. I wanted to try it, and I tried it. It took me probably at least a good 10 tries with my cellphone to get the sound, because the cellphone does not pick up. And I got it with the little blinking light, red blinking light, and it's going, "Whoop, whoop, whoop." And this is what I have to listen to, and this is what the residents have to listen to.
It sounds like an air, air path, a jet going by.
Yep.
And it never lands while we're talking.
Yep.
Folks, folks, if you can do me a favor, if you do want to make a comment once Mr. Souza's over, please come up to the microphone if you don't mind.
So, as of what they stated, it would not change. Now, I remember the other one, and I don't know how many other people remember. I don't remember flicking on Spread Street, and I don't remember flicking on 24.
Certainly did on 24.
I can clarify that comment, might help. When I asked Wind Energy about the, whether the shadow flicker would go away because it was at an increased height, he said no.
Yeah.
So basically, he said, "You're still going to have shadow flicker," but his solution was to shut it down as you're asking during prime hours. And I don't know if that's been addressed. Have you taken any calls, Mr. Rayner, from residents or only Mr. Terry?
Okay.
Or, Mr. Souza.
Souza.
Souza, I apologize.
Is there anybody here from Wind Energy?
Mr. De Pasquale, you want to come up and address some of these, please?
Okay.
You're looking that way.
Yeah, I'm Anthony Oshaski, I live on Spread Street. I was here when you guys voted on this, well, before you voted, we talked about it and whatnot, and this flicker was there then. It's on the internet, my house is on the internet, you can just pull it up and look at it. And like some of these people said, it does sound like we're in an air path. When the wind is light, you don't hear it that much, but when wind's heavy and that thing's up on the hill, it's mostly heavy all the time, you can hear it. And when it turns towards our houses, you really hear it. And it actually makes the windows shudder a little bit when a gust comes by. So it is very noisy, and it is over the decibels. I live 750 feet away from it, as a crow flies, and it's very noisy. In the fall, the flicker's not as bad because leaves are on the trees still, but right now, as the sun is low and starts to come up higher, the flicker's bad. It lasts almost hour and 45 minutes at my house, and then it gets less and less and less as the sun gets higher and higher. And that's what they're saying, it'll last 20 minutes. We had this big discussion about how long it would take, you know, how long it flickers before, and the contractor stood right here and said, "Well, if we have a problem, we'll check in on you guys, and we can adjust it or turn it off." Well, that's never happened. He promised a lot of stuff at that time, and none of it has happened. It's not, you know, it's bothering us, but I don't think it's, you know, we're complaining, it's your guys' duty to get this contractor. You rented the land to them, it's on your land or our land, and I think you guys should get on them and say, "Hey, listen, we're having a problem, let's take care of it." That's all I have to say.
And that's what we're going to do tonight.
Hi, I'm Robin Hall. I live at 26 Carver. So our backyard is right up to Fort Bots. Our, my father-in-law built that house over 50 years ago, and when he bought that house, he situated it so it can see the Mount Hope Bridge. We have a beautiful wraparound porch. We cannot sit out there because it's constant flickering. Mr. Souza had an exemplary presentation, but as a person who lives there, it is unacceptable. Why is it acceptable? Because it's only a few months out of the year. It's unacceptable. The noise we hear at night, because our bedrooms are right next to Fort Bots, which is right next to the windmill, is a constant whoosh. We have had to install windows that were thick, so we don't hear it in our bedroom, and we still hear it. That's not acceptable. My father-in-law did not build that house expecting to have a windmill, I don't know how many feet in our backyard. We live Christmas. We had Christmas at my house. I could not have Christmas in our dining room because I had a flicker from 1 to 2. That was upsetting, like, all the people that come and visit. Is that fair? Because we live in, for a couple of months out of the year, I have to suffer with this? I can't go in my backyard because I have to listen to a jet airplane that I try to convince my people who visit me, "No, no, it's the highway." And they're like, "No, it's the jet, it's that thing." It is loud. It is unacceptable. It is ruining the quality of the neighborhood that we live in, the sound. No one else would have put up with this. I think you haven't heard about it because no one believes that you're going to do anything. That's why maybe you only hear from Mr. Souza, because all of these other people, the neighbors that we've known in the past that have brought this to you, have, there was no resolution. No one has come to us, no one has come to our yard and said, "Wow, this big propeller is going all the way down to Spread Street through your house." My father-in-law was ill in the house, and we had to deal with that. It's not acceptable. It's just not. You might not have heard of anybody else, because no one thinks you're going to do anything. There is going to be no resolution from this, because we're just a community of few people who deal with it, and we just deal with it and go on. But no one else seems to think that this neighborhood where we live is worthy of silence, peaceful environment, and, you know, no sort of, of-
Quality of life.
Quality of life, but even like environmental, like, it's, it's, it's sound, it's sound noise, it's, it's just awful sometimes. You can't go in your house, and that's not right for just a few people who weren't told what, you know, maybe, they didn't realize how bad it was going to be for them. And it's, it's not fair. If it was in somebody else's neighborhood, the neighbors like it either. And if it was in your neighborhood, you wouldn't like it in your kitchen. Yes?
It is in my neighborhood.
Will you like it?
It's in my neigh-
No, I don't. Then let's do something about it.
It's in my neighborhood, and I live on East Main Road.
Okay. Do you have it too in your kitchen that you have to pull down your blinds at noon to watch TV?
You can't, you can't get away from it unless you put a board on the window.
Yeah, and is that fair to you?
No.
Fair to your taxes, to your, to your resale value? No, and it's not fair to us either. I mean, that's all I have to say.
The problem is, the problem is you have it in your house, and I understand the flicker, for about an hour, because that's when the sun goes through it and here, now the sun moves over. It's not in your house for 15 minutes. It is in your house for 15 minutes or an hour. It's in your neighbor's house the next hour.
But so what's the difference between-
So everybody's got it 365 days a year.
Does that matter? More than hours?
And it's still in our-
No, no, I'm just saying, I understand it. It's, it's all the time-
My house, hour and 45 minutes.
It's far-
Correct, but it's in your neighbor's house after that. I get it. It's up, it's there for when the sun's up. I get it.
So I'm supposed to be thankful that it's a cloudy day?
No, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's not just your house.
I understand. It's why these people are here. It's not just my house, but it doesn't seem like anything's going to be done about it. It's a magic, a major structure enforcement that no one is going to change. So these people and us, we have to deal with the consequences of something that we didn't ask for.
It's constant flicker when the sun is up, it's constant noise once the sun goes down.
Yes.
I got it.
In the middle of the night, like he said. I mean, it's, you just hear it constantly.
It's, it gets so bad that when the, so when the, the blades line up parallel to the front of my house, it's like somebody's beating it with a drum.
I mean, what is-
If it's off a little bit, my house is this way, and the blade's just turned a little, it's not bad. When it absolutely lines up parallel to the front of your house, and it has to be that way in the bedroom where, where Mr. Souza has his, has his house. It's probably even worse, because he's got, because he's got a hard corner. I mean, I get it.
You're right next to-
And is Mr. De Pasquale here?
He's right behind you.
How you doing?
Yeah.
I'm John Vegas, 259 Spread Street, and similar to the other complaints about noise and flicker, have that significantly at my house. I would say it's no worse than the first windmill that was replaced. I think I heard on one of the public access about this tower having some modification to make it a little bit quieter, and I would say that's possible, but it's just as loud as ever. And like you say, you have the flicker for a period of time during, during the prevailing winds. I would say, and I'm not sure if other people feel this way, but throughout the summer, there's almost no flicker. But this time of year, it's very prominent. It can be every day, a cloudy day, it doesn't happen, but it can be every day. And then, the, the noise, during really windy days at my house, this is just the way it is at my house, at really windy days, you really can't distinguish the windmill significantly from the, the wind blowing through the trees. However, the windmill doesn't just blow when it's significant wind, it blows at real modest wind. And so during the summer, especially late August, it is quite a bit louder than the ambient noise, and I hear it significantly throughout August. And I would say, as far as the people here, I might be one of the farthest from the windmill, from what I've heard from other people.
I'm on East Main Road, and you can hear it.
Okay, you're farther away? Okay. So, so I'd, I'd really would like to hear some solutions from Mr. De Pasquale, but at the same time, I don't think we're really organized enough to present this appropriately. And I think if we're going to really effect, you know, a notice like this drop is, is a great start, but we're probably going to need to present something with, with a lawyer at some point. I think that is the recommendation that I'd like to make to the other, that we consider the option of presenting a legal challenge. Thank you.
Okay, and back to what I, what I was talking about, and due to the research and checking, we don't get nothing. No electric, do we? It all goes to Coventry. Coventry's getting it, and we have to deal with it. Is that fair to us? We get nothing for the town?
In terms of what?
The electric. Coventry gets that electric from that wind turbine.
No.
We get a percentage off on our electric.
The town pays, the town pays for the electricity that it produces. The excess that the town doesn't use goes to Coventry.
Well, that's not what it states in the, in what they call, it's told me exactly what you guys were paying per kilowatt.
We're paying, we're paying 15 and a half cents per kilowatt.
Cent per kilowatt. And it did not say that first it goes to the town, and whatever's extra goes to-
Yes. So we, we purchase whatever we need for the town hall, for the school buildings, for the streetlights, from the, from the, from the turbine. Any excess that is generated from the turbine is then sold to Coventry, and there's actually a new business, I don't know, was it five? Eight?
Eight, yeah.
There's a request for them to sell some to the convention center.
And the, few other things, when this was being negotiated, did Mr. De, De- Pasquale. Pasquale ever let you know that they were already being sued by North Kingston for this? No. They were being sued. I have all the documentation here, and they won it. They are paying the residents $160 a month. Am I correct, right?
I can.
Okay. Okay, and then there was another gentleman that also, they were sued twice, to be exact. And this was in, let's see, one time in 2013, and the other time they were, was in 2011. And then also, they were also, had to pay a gentleman the difference, because he sold his house. And because the property value was, they could not get the money, what the house was worth, they had to pay the difference. Is that, am I correct? That is correct, because I have it right here, and it says it's not to be released and stuff like that, but that's besides the point. It's supposed to be a close, what they call, but I have it. And then, and then I have proof right here, so you can say, "No," but it says right here that you guys did pay the money.
For the town.
Okay, so if we have to, and I don't want to deal with it, and I know you don't want to deal with it, but we, the town people, get nothing. But they could do this for North Kingston, and they did this, what they call, when they were negotiating, but they never disclosed, "Oh, yeah, we're, we're being, we're going to court right now," because they went to, let's see, Supreme Court. But they didn't want to disclose that, because they didn't want to tell you that, that was happening. You might not went with that, because there was the issue, and we had this issue with the old one. It wasn't, like I said, because it was lower, it wasn't as bad, the trees, like he says, blocked a lot of it and stuff. I was affected by it, but not as bad. I was affected by it, but not as bad. Now, because it's so high, it's traveling further. We're getting it on Sprague Street, we're getting it on 24th, West Main Road.
East Main Road.
East Main Road. And they're getting it on West Main Road.
Yes, they are.
My cousin lives on West Main Road, and he's getting it. And I mean, it's, either, either we do something about it or lower the thing. Maybe we might, we have to lower it. It's too high. Something has to be done because we shouldn't have to deal with this. And the noise is, is my biggest complaint, because I need my sleep. I can't be driving a 105-foot ladder truck that weighs probably about 30, 40 ton, and going down these roads. It's bad enough trying to maneuver around people that don't want to get out of your way. I, I mean, I've been doing it for 29 years, and now it, like I said, it's starting to affect my job. My, my boss has said something, hey, you're awfully tired and stuff. So they, they've kind of hinted around for me to do a sleep study, to see if, if I'm not getting the proper sleep. I know I'm not getting the proper sleep, because I'm calling the Portent Police at 3 o'clock in the morning and saying, hey, can you come out here and take a reading for me? And like I said, I think the Portent Police have better things to do at, at that town of mine, than coming out and seeing Mr. Souza. And so these, these are things that are, what they call, I was very, very upset when, when the person gave me all this research on what was going on and how different places, and how the blades come off, they had one in New York, that a blade came off, and what they call, I mean, hopefully that never happens. On the, on the guess on the Cape, I spoke with the lawyer on the Cape that handled that case out there, because I've been in touch with lawyer and stuff like that. And there's been, they shut down those on the Cape. I mean, we got to do something, because this is not what I, what they call, signed up for to live in Portland. I think we should all have a quality of life, no matter where you live. Like I said, if I had my leaf blower going and I went into your guys' neighborhood and I was running that thing, that gentleman right there would have a Portent Police, because there's a regulation that says this, because it's a motor, it can't be ran. But what's the difference? That is considered like a motor. And then the other thing I have is the decimals. 55. Okay, that's, that's 55 decimals. But then it says, if it's a constant noise, it should drop five decimals. Now that thing runs 54, and a lot of these people can verify, 54. I got 57. I have got 49. I have got 46. I mean, I have got different decimals, don't get me wrong, that has woken me up. But like I said, minds the tongue. It's just, it's just like you're, you're right here, it's just like me talking to you, it's just going straight there, and that's where it's dying. Because my bedroom's there, my living room, and I, I can't enjoy my, because the next thing is this, I'm going to have to sell my house, because I'm not going to live like this. And if he thinks it's a great place to live and to be dealing with this, who would in your backyard?
Provide yourself.
You know?
Mr. Souza, just address us, we'll...
I know I shouldn't be what they call...
That's okay.
But uh...
It's okay, you don't...
Now Frank, he, he wanted to make it, but Frank has medical conditions, and he asked me to speak on his behalf. He's had his house on Lowell Drive for sale for six months now. He's had people, many people look at it. Apparently, when they look up and they see that wind turbine, or they catch the flicker, or the noise, that's not the neighborhood they want to be in. So I even spoke to the tax office, and I said, well, give us a break on our taxes. Do something for the residents. And he says, oh, that can't be done. Of course it can be done. You guys have the power to try to help and make it somewhat acceptable for us to enjoy. Like the lady said, you can't go in your backyard. I have people over, we're having a cookout, next thing you know, the flicker starts, you know? I thought about building a sunroom off my house, but you know that, if I do that, now I got to pay more taxes to stop the stupid flicker from coming in my house, because I'm adding more square footage to my house, ain't I? So it's costing me. I have to run ACs, because I can't open my window and enjoy the fresh air in my house in the summertime, because of the noise or the flicker. I have to keep my shades closed. I have windows, there is tape and brown paper on my bedroom windows, and I stalk and get a slight flicker. I should not live like this, and neither should these residents. We should not have to do this. So like I put in my proposal, I think the best thing we can do is during the flicker time, shut it down. They know when it's flickering, shut it down. Make the residents happy. And then the ordinance on noise, if that thing is making enough noise where it's waking people up, and we have the noise on, that thing should be shut down between 9:00 and 6:00 in the morning, because that is most time people want to get a good night's sleep. I can deal with it 8:00, 9:00, but you know something? After 9:00, I'm ready for bed. I don't know about the rest of yous, because I got a busy day the next day, because my day is not, you know, I never know what I'm going to be doing. So, and these are the things that, what they call, I would like to bring it to your attention, and if we can't come to some solution with this thing, my next step is, like the gentleman said, we're going to have to get a lawyer, just like the North Kingston, just like they did on the Cape. We'll get this thing shut down and get it moved, because that's what would be my next move. If I have to go to this extreme, I don't want that thing moved out of my backyard. Okay? And like I hope, we don't have to go this. We're all adults, we should be able to settle this...
Yes, we can.
And make a solution that we can all live with. And I, I didn't know it affected you that...
I get it the month of October.
Yep.
And if you, if you look at a globe, remember that when you were in, in the kindergarten? There's a figure eight on the globe, and it says the axis turns, the earth turns on its axis. Those are the people affected based on the height.
So you should be getting it in April too.
I get it in April.
Spring and fall, based on sun angle.
No, because of the width of the figure eight, it's moved the other side of the, the...
That's wrong.
That's wrong. I get it spring, fall.
I don't, and again, depending on, depending on where you are from the post, near the post, and, and turnpike avenue and West Main Road...
If you're south of it, you don't get any flicker at all.
I'm, I'm north of it. I'm north of it. Right.
Mr. Souza?
Yep.
I'm going to have Mr. De Pasquale come up and address some of these things, and feel free, if you have a question, or if anybody else has a question, or if you have a question or a comment, please come to the, to the podium. That way, people at home can hear the comments as well, the microphone helps. So...
Good evening.
How are you, Mr. De Pasquale?
I'm good.
So you've obviously, you've heard the complaints.
I've, I've heard the complaints. I'm a little setback at them, because there has only been, there's been two complaints that were brought to us from the town, and depends where you want me to stop, but we got two complaints. We got one next to Cumberland Farms, since the turbine has been up, and we did a noise study and a flicker study on that piece of property. And we did the ambient noise of the area. The ambient noise in the area is about 85 decibels on a quiet night, so we have done a lot of noise testing. The manufacturer's warranty on the turbine requires it meeting exactly what we submitted to the town, and it's under the decibel. It might not be acceptable, and I'm not saying it's acceptable to anybody, but the decibel level of the turbine is actually underneath the decibel level of the ambient. On a windy night, the wind does, does drown out the turbine. On a night that is not so windy, you'll hear it, but again, measuring the decibel at that night, it is falling less than the old turbine was. And there's all software, we measured at the site. When it was permitted, we were there taking down an old structure in the town, and exactly like the, the crowd said, we were not supposed to impact the town any more than where we are. We would, I have some cards, we took down the people's complaints. We have talked to the town manager, the cleaning department, numerous times, because we were discussing about power going to other towns, and why the town is doing upgrades. Originally, you were going to burn 3.8 million kilowatts, and you've done a bunch of upgrades, which have been great, and now we're down to like 3.4 million. So together, we work together to move some of that extra, excess energy elsewhere, so we're working with the town on that. If there was a complaint and was brought to the town manager, we will go out and do measurements at each person's house, but we were awarded a contract to not impact anything more than what was there, and we believe that, we've been working on it. But I will work with the neighbors. We can go out and meet at the houses and see if there's other planting, other solutions that can be done, because we're, we're very willing, and I would have already. And before the turbine was up, and I apologize, I forget your first name, sir.
Anthony.
Anthony. I met with Anthony on December 7th, prior to construction, talked to him about it, and you know, I heard it again tonight, looking for, you know, the town to reimburse taxes or something for the area. We have had a few conversations since then, but I have not been brought anybody's complaints except the one, and I apologize, house, that was at Cumberland Farms, and I looked at that study today for flicker and noise. So I will work with the neighbors in the area, we can look at it. One of the things that you said, sir, which is very correct, the threshold of 30 hours a year, they, we are looking and we're monitoring 30 hours a year and we're under it, but exactly what you said is the case. Today, it's on your house for 45 minutes, and an hour later, it's on the other. So the solution to shut it down, we need to manage the whole turbine, is not really a solution, because that means we're going to shut the turbine down 20 plus seconds. And that's not, and that's not what... And that's not, I, what a solution is. I think a solution would be is I can meet with the neighbors that are having issues. I have business cards, I've been more than willing to meet with people, and if there is a, a neighbor that calls in and has a complaint, I, I would love that number to be brought right to us, and we'll immediately respond within, within a day to that.
One of the, one of the things that you, we talked about and you promised was, A, mitigating and doing some plantings along Education Lane, that hasn't happened as of yet, in terms of arborvitae along Education Lane, the block, some of the people on that side.
So, so there was one of the neighbors that we worked with, that actually she's not here, that has been very pleased with the outcome at her house, when we were actually going to do some sheds and other, other planting at her house, and once the turbine went up, she realized that the planting that was put in that was smaller than the sheds has grown much higher, that has corrected that. So any neighbor that is immediately in that area, we would meet and look at some options. Just, I mean, we, we know we're 414 feet, we're not much higher. The only reason we changed the height is to have a certified turbine, so we didn't have the same problem that we had before I got here. So we wanted to make sure it was a UL certified from Turnoch, so an adjustment was made to that it met all those requirements. It wasn't a major adjustment, but prior to making that adjustment, we gave to the town the exact flicker and noise of both machines. And this machine is a lot quieter than what was there. And I, and I do agree that some people might feel it isn't. One thing I will say is, is nobody lives closer to a turbine than me, and 240 feet to the bottom of it, so I, I know what the turbine sound and, and what flicker is with them. But you have a question for me, I believe.
Before Ms. Pedro asks a question, I have one more question for you. There's a comment, I don't know which way it is. You had also testified, and I forget the young lady who works for you, she was here, and she testified, and she showed us all the, the year-long maps of the flicker and where it's going to be and how long it'll be in this area. And you testified, or she testified, that we could shut it down those, those hours of the day. So let's say it's between 6:00 or close, this time of year, it's probably what, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning? Or 3:00 to 6:00 in the evening? I've been guessing, because...
The, the adjustment shutting down is we were exceeding the 30-hour. So we discussed that if the turbine is impacting a house for over 30 hours, we would mitigate the house or shut down the turbine. So it wasn't shutting down, we never stood in front of this council and other councils and said, we're shutting the whole turbine down. So we have done flicker studies on each neighborhood, and what's interesting is what, what the people have said, is really when the summertime's here, is when the impact should be the worst, and because of the foliage and everything, it isn't. So what I can do is, is anybody that has a complaint, we can look at, and look at, and I can do, bring in a exact flicker map of what that house is getting at a receptor. So receptor is a window, so this is a receptor that we're looking at here is a window, and we pay attention, we monitor at a receptor. We don't monitor the whole neighborhood, because again, that means the turbine will never, would never be running. But it...
Obviously, flicker is an issue when the sun's out.
Yep.
Noise seems to be the bigger issue at nighttime.
Yep.
I'll go back and check my notes and, and watch some tape, but I'm pretty sure the testimony was we could shut it down to mitigate those times of day, but...
That was absolutely, I stood up here, and we, we discussed that in detail, that if it, if it exceeded the hours, and, and we could sit and talk about it. And at the same time, if there's something, I can meet with anybody to look at their property.
Ms. Pedro.
So have you shut it down as of yet to mitigate any of these?
We have not got one complaint for flicker till tonight. Just to be clear, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a complaint. We got a noise complaint at Cumberland Farms, and I think the town manager...
So my question, my question was, have you shut it down as of yet?
No, we have not.
No, you've never shut it down?
Yes.
Because I have an article from, let's see, January 23rd, oh, this is, I think, Mr. McGaw, talking about Mr. De Pasquale. He also said, "The taller turbine will not affect the amount of shadow flicker, which neighbors have complained about. Since it will produce more energy, a taller turbine could be shut down for brief spells during peak flicker activity." I also wrote that in my notes, that you said, "You can shut it down if you can't mitigate." So I'm wondering if you can just shut this thing down for a certain amount of time? Because in New Business 8, you're saying that the energy of the wind turbine is higher than expected. The energy production of the wind turbine is higher than expected. Well, if it's higher than expected, why can't you shut it down for a certain amount of time?
So I'm going to answer two questions to you. I will look at any house and mitigate the turbine to 30 hours a year and to shut it down. The second question you asked, the reason we're not reducing, you're reducing your load, so we're trying to bring an offset. So we came here to pay off a debt, a bond for the town, and remove a broken turbine that was unsafe. We did what we said we were going to do exactly. Then the town did a massive overhaul on their electric and dropped your electric consumption.
Right.
And when the contract was negotiated, it was for 3.8 million kilowatt-hours a year. And now it's at about 3.2 it's going to drop down to. So the town has extra energy, so what that was seeking is to send that to another location, so the town isn't paying for something that they're not using right now.
Right.
So there's two different, there's two different things there.
But it still says that the energy production of the wind turbine is higher than expected.
The, the energy of the wind turbine is exactly what we estimated, and we financed it from day one.
So somebody...
So I don't, I'm not sure where the higher than expected came from.
That's what the memo says. That's why I was kind of, kind of going to move to combine New B8 with this, because we kind of need to talk about both at the same time.
Yeah, I think you're referring to my memo.
I am referring to your memo. "The energy production of the wind turbine is higher than expected," it says.
Yeah, and that may be my misunderstanding, I'm not a wind turbine specialist.
And I'm going to go back and check my notes again, because I remember specifically asking if we go through all these energy upgrades that we did, in terms of putting LEDs and whatnot, we would not be responsible for purchasing the delta that was there.
Yeah, you did mention that.
And that's, that's exactly, so right now, the delta, what happened last year is your, your energy upgrades came, and your Schedule B allowed 3.8 million, and the end of the year, the 3.8 million wasn't there, so National Grid gave you credits for 3.8 million kilowatt-hours, and the town only wants to pay for 3.4, because that's what you consume. So the action tonight is so the town, we're reducing the debt on the town to pay for power that you're not using. So as you are changing your consumption, so your police station's going to come on, and we're looking at that, and working with the town manager's going to come online, your new public safety complex, your energy source is going to come down more. So what we're doing is taking that energy and displacing it to another location. So the original agreement was 3.8 million kilowatts for the town, but the turbine proforma always met of what it was going to. Now, if the turbine is not meeting the requirements, the turbine will be shut down, and we can determine which houses be an impact the most. So we have two options. We look at an individual location, we look at some screening, there is multiple different options that we can look into, and then we look at the turbine time and how much time that house is actually happening on that house. And then we have to determine if we're going to shut it down for a short period of time on a day. There's another thing that can go, which the technology has, we can put a receptor on a house that is getting excessive flicker on it, that will measure it, and will keep track, so it will shut down the turbine automatically. So you can have a model that says worst-case scenario is 22 hours a year. We can put a receptor out and we can measure, but the models are very close. And what would happen is, is a day when the energy and the wind turbine isn't really need to be turning, let's say at like four or five meters of wind, the turbine would automatically just shut off saying, this person has an issue. So I would have to go and put, they look about the size of a cellphone, on a couple of receptors to measure that. So there are solutions and if I knew there was an issue on this before tonight, we would have responded prior to coming here. Property values, I want to speak to that for a moment. The North Kingston, we just sold a 23, 2400 square foot ranch for 540,000. The state did a very high detail property value on wind turbines. And it does, we sold 30 homes in North Kingston after the turbine was built. To be fair, above market value. So the turbine has been proven not to have any market value on a home across New England. Yes, sir?
Those are within, those are within your flicker profile?
Those turbines are within 500, those houses are with 500 feet of the turbine. And you can look on it right on Google Earth and if people want to look where I live, you'll see that where they are. The Portsmouth turbine is a very unique turbine because the turbine has all the houses to the north of it. And a lot of sites that we cite turbines on, and we talked about this three years ago, you would not cite a turbine with houses to the north of it. And that's, you know, one of the issues with the flicker. So I am willing to mitigate, look at each individual house and, and come back to this council with the findings. So work with the town manager and the town planner and go through it and then come back up here with the findings. Go ahead, sir.
So your design parameters that you have and, and the model that you're working with, you know who's affected now?
We know, we know if the earth was completely flat and there is not any trees on it, I know exactly what houses exceed, would exceed 30 decibels. And I have zero right now. So for a year, so we're measuring.
I'm not talking about decibels, I'm talking about the flicker.
No, I'm sorry, decimal, flicker, I'm sorry, flicker. So we know through modeling, best and worst case. What we don't know is how tall does a tree get over a year, which makes the shadow flickering less. So when you load the information into the software, it tells me exactly the time of day flicker will hit a piece of property.
In the month, in the month.
The month time, everything right to a tick. And it will be the same every single year, sir.
Correct. The second thing is, you stated that the, that the dB level at, at East Main Road is 89 dB, I think is what I heard you say.
I said 85.
85.
85 decibels.
That's almost, that's almost a backpack blower running.
My, I'm saying the ambient decibel at the high school where we are when we're not running.
What is the?
Is 85 decibels. What, what happens at night, you can get, and you can measure it, you can go to Radio Shack, get a great.
Yep.
One that will do as much as a $10,000 measuring. But what we could do for the town is do some noise studies for you. So we can bring in a professional to measure the, the ambient with the turbine running and with the turbine not running.
So what is the ambient noise without the turbine running?
There are days that the ambient noise is 85 decibels at the high school and the noise is coming from.
On East Main, on East Main Road, do you know what it was because you quoted that number?
Exactly, right now, sir. I wasn't prepared to talk about noise when I came here tonight. I came, I saw the agenda. I came for the other item on the agenda, but I wasn't, I can pull out the information for you and I can get exactly the decimal level. But we, to be clear, no complaint was brought to us except one.
Correct, I get that.
And if there was, we would have immediately addressed it, just like we've addressed everything else that the town's asked us to.
Okay. I understand that, I've never made a complaint myself. I get flicker and the noises is quite loud when the ambient noise drops after nine o'clock. I guess that's all I have for questions.
Ms. Edgar.
Thank you, Mr. De Pasquale. What was the, do you recall what the height increase was for the new turbine?
The, you were 78, your tower, I believe, was a 78 meter tower and I believe we went to 82. And I, I would rather get to the exact measurement, but I believe the increase of the height was under 30 feet. But I would go back, there wasn't a big, so we're at an 82 meter tower, you had a short tower, short and stubby, and you had a blade that is not made anymore. So if your turbine that you had here had an issue with a blade, it was a 78 meter blade and the blade went to 82. So, so I just need to go back and get the exact height. But we went to a blade that's standard, so if there was an issue with the blade right now, they're in Rhode Island, you can replace them. But the 78 meter blade is no longer built by LM or anything. So that was one of the reasons why we brought to the council the change to standardize the whole system.
And then with respect to the, to the noise that the turbine generates, it's a function of the rotation, the speed of the rotation?
It, it's exactly, it's a function. And there's a warranty there. So if the turbine is not meeting the requirements that was given here, the manufacturer and they were out there this afternoon, we were out there, I will immediately put this to them to check. Because sometimes without a complaint, there could be, there's, there's little drain holes in the bottom of the blades. And if one of those holes off the blade and there's a lightning rod that collects lightning, so if that gets hit and nobody that's living in the area makes a complaint that something's noisier, that this noise that everybody's talking about could be something on the blade that the blade's need to be inspected. So I will be talking with Vences, actually the head person for this region, it will be here tomorrow, he's actually coming in tonight. We will discuss it and we can look at the blades themselves. And the other thing is, is the weeps on the bottom of the blades, if they're clogged, will make a lot louder noise of the turbine when it was cycling. So that needs to be checked to, to make sure that they're meeting within what their, their standards after their warranty. Because if not, they pay for the power and they have to repair it.
But remotely, do you have the ability to control how fast the turbine, you can control that, right?
Yeah, you, so you can control it, you can pitch the blades in and out to set a program up that does it like simultaneously. You could write a program to say you don't want it to turn up. I'll give you a prime example, we have, are shutting the turbine down on lower wind in the summer because the mosquitoes and everything that are flying up. So we're finding that to run the turbine at, at 3.5 meters of wind, it's not worth it, we can just shut it down. So we're reprogramming right now the software in all our turbines to, to, that the lower wind speeds we won't run. So that will mitigate some of the flicker now that people are talking about, so we're already programming it. You can stop the turbine instantaneously. I can adjust the turbine to work with a certain wind, it's always moving. I can't tell the turbine tonight to turn slower and tomorrow not to.
No, but what I'm getting at is, could you, could you set it so that it would only rotate at a certain speed in order to control the noise at night?
The, you could, you could set it, absolutely. You can set the turbine at any speed you want it, you can set it to that a halo.
To not exceed, because obviously it's a function of the wind, but on a really windy night, if you were able to control the speed, it theoretically would keep the decibels a little lower.
But to, just to be very clear in the direction that people are asking questions, the wind maps of the area, you're producing the energy which is paying the, the node off on the turbine, which is maintaining and managing it, is producing the power. The power is being produced at night, night and into winter.
I, I understand that.
You know, and.
I'm just asking the question of, do we have that ability?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We absolutely have that ability.
Thank you.
I want to ask one more question.
Sure.
Thank you. I know you, you said the blade is taller, but let's talk about the whole profile of the blade because I think there's more flicker out of this one because the blades are deeper. Could you confirm or deny that?
I can, I'll get, we can go through the specs, you have them at all.
I mean, I don't think it's just length because length is going to say that it's going to go further, right? Because it's taller.
The, the profile, our blades are actually slimmer than the blades that were up there.
They are.
It's a newer blade, it's, it's, it's designed to capture more wind but less surface. But absolutely, the, the adjustments of the other turbine, the flicker and the noise from the other turbine exceed what you have right now. I am willing to work with something, but the profile of the blade isn't changing the flicker at all.
The other one only turned 18 RPM, what do you turn, like 26?
Say that again.
18 RPM is, I believe, somewhere around 18 to 20 was the RPM.
We don't, we don't exceed, I think, 24 RPMs on our generator.
Right, so once, once every 10 seconds, everybody's got a, or they've got a blade noise, right? As it goes past the upright.
I'm not sure if I understood that question exactly.
RPM, it's all 30 turns, right?
Yep.
Uh, three blades, once every 10 seconds, boom, 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 you got a blade, you got a blade turning the, past it. That's why I was wondering what your RPM was. Because it seems like.
The other turbine, the other turbine never turned, the other turbine had a problem with the gearbox.
Right, but it had, it only turned, it turned slower.
No.
No.
No, but the turbine needs to turn the speed, it has a knockout, a design speed. I will, I will get it, but all turbines run up to a certain wind and then we shut down RPMs because the wind's too strong and we turn out of the blades. But with that information, I will look at that too. June's taking notes right now, so I'm going to look at what your turbine was turning compared to the RPMs we are right now, the specifications. We're going to check the blades immediately.
There, there are two noises. There's a, there's a thump, a low-frequency thump, and that's the blade, I determined it's the blade, I think it's the blade going past the upright. And then there's a high-frequency noise. And I can't tell whether that's machinery running or it's just turbulence coming off the blade. It, it seems to be higher. There's two components to the noise.
So I think the best thing would be is to talk to the manufacturer. I will have a consultant.
It sounds like you've got a maintenance period coming, right?
But we're here every day. They're here, they're, we have six techs that are in Rhode Island every single day. So we're, we're in Portsmouth, but we're not in Portsmouth five times a week, we're here continuously. So I will talk with them tomorrow. The owner, the owner, the head, the president of Vences US is here, he's coming into the States tonight. And I will meet with him tomorrow and discuss the noise because we want to check to make sure there isn't something else that is being caused, that's causing the noise. And then I, from there, I will do some decimal readings within the next two weeks, on and off, depending on the wind, what it is, what it is shut off. The important thing about having a noise study is, is we know, we correlate noise study with the production. So we look at, is it production, am I at maximum production to get the maximum noise out of the turbine? Or am I, or what's happening with production? So that's what's good about a true noise study. A meter going up and you can read a decimal meter and you stand there and I can shut the turbine off, you're not going to, and at whatever spin it is, the decimal leave is not going to change. You're going to still see it jumping up and down every time a cock comes. So the noise study, I will, I will talk to the town manager on it and I will engage a company to do an independent noise study for you.
And can we do that at multiple times of the day? Obviously nighttime is the best because people are sleeping.
So what they do, to be clear, what, what we do is, is they first will take multiple readings for like three or four days, just spot readings around the area. And then what they'll do is they'll set up a stationary meter and that meter will run for seven days entirety. And then we take that information and we load the production of the turbine, exactly what direction the wind was coming, all the information into it, and we produce a noise study. It's about a 12 to 14,000 dollar study. We have done them before. I would like to work with Vences first to check if there was a lightning hit on the turbine. And usually you could see it very easily, that could be making the noise from the blade and if that's the correct, we'll work on correcting that immediately.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. De Pasquale right now? Actually, you can hang out for a minute because we have some questions behind you. If you could address your questions to the council and through that, Mr. De Pasquale here.
Thank you. Mr. De Pasquale, John Vegas, 259 Sprague Street. I would like to request that a, a little bit more effort was made to, to address the complaints that were tonight. And I understand that there have not been many complaints that have reached you, but I've talked with my neighbors and I don't want to disparage anyone who has significant problems, but we've dealt with it. We're not pleased about it, but we've dealt with it. So I would like to ask that Mr. De Pasquale offer a significant commitment to meet these with significant monitoring, which would, in my opinion, be something along the lines of a year-long study at a specific location at each person's property, monitoring sound and flicker. And that could be done, for example, with a window-based monitoring system that would monitor street ambient noise. At my house, we have a lot of traffic during the day, 4:00 PM, it's much louder than the windmill on its loudest day. But at 7:00 PM at night, when there's no traffic, it's, it's significantly loud, surprisingly loud. So it may not meet the requirements, you know? But with that data, a year-long study at, anyone who complains, you know, let's say you have 20 or 30 of these, it could be significantly expensive. But that could be brought back to say, it's possible that we should not be running the wind turbine for the impact that it's having on the residents during this period of time. And it would take a year really to get real good data, in my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm, excuse me, Denise Swolke, I live at 3140 East Main Road. I'm not, I had a lot of things that I was going to say tonight, but I'm not going to reiterate everything that's already been brought up. The noise is horrible. You were saying 85 decibels, 85 decibels, it was already stated. In the daytime is one thing, it's obnoxious, but at night, it's, it's unacceptable. We just, we can't sleep. I put earplugs in, I put a pillow over my head, windows are shut, fans running. Whoosh, whoosh.
Denise, can I stop you for a second? And this is a general question for everybody. Has it gotten worse over the past couple of months, couple of weeks? Or is this something that has been happening for the past three years?
It has been happening ever since the first windmill went up. And I actually kept the chart. If it's over four miles per hour at night, it's intolerable. So that's an easy thing. Ooh, it's four miles per hour tonight, shut it back. You don't need to do an expensive study. It's a very simple thing. Four miles per hour, it's keeping people awake, shut it down. Or, or knock it back. It's, it seems like it's very simple. We do deserve to sleep. I would like to open my windows, can't do it anymore.
Excuse me?
So, without going through everything that's already been said.
Appreciate that, that's fine.
I think that's an easy thing.
Ms. Pedro.
Ms. Swolke? Hi. Is it, is the noise different from this windmill compared to the last one?
I think it's louder. Personally, I think it's louder.
Oh, that's another thing that I've got here. It's also quieter. That's from the Providence Journal.
We've been told a lot of things that are not true. We've got three bedrooms upstairs, you can't sleep in any one of them anymore.
Yeah. Thank you.
I can put up with a lot in the daytime because you're awake, there's stuff going on, but it's at night.
Another thing, another thing about the noise, and I don't know if this is, I don't know if any of you've noticed this, but I, I walk around town a lot and I, one night I was walking down Water Street and I was coming up one of the streets from Water Street towards East Main Road and I heard it. And it was incredible. And I was like, wow, what is that? But it was foggy. And I was wondering if the fog has, yeah, I was, I was thinking that because it would swish against the water and the air. So that's another concern because, because it's damp here, all summer. You know, so if the, if the air is thick with water, it's making more noise.
You should have heard that thing a couple of weeks ago on an icy night. My neighbor said they thought there were snow plows going up and down his road all night long. And then they realized, no, it's, it's the windmill. There's ice on the blades. It was unbelievable. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, as people ask questions, it's probably better that I.
Sure.
Interact a little bit. The, the last statement was said, the turbine does not run, it has ice detecting in it. So the turbine does not run with ice on it. If there's a ice storm or a snow storm, you know, she might be hearing it, but the turbine cannot run with ice on the blades. That, that's one thing.
the blades. That's one thing. The other question to you, your statement, there's no, and if there's any engineers in the room, and they can look at the technology, there is no physical possible way that this turbine is noisier than what came down. Because, because the turbine that came down had hundreds of moving parts and had a very large generator and a gearbox inside of it. So, the noise, we know per the, it's the turbine manufacturers that built them, and that turbine, the noise decibel level with the amount of moving pieces to what you have. So, you know, the, I'm not here telling you that the neighbors are not complaining about what they're hearing, but we are very confident that when you do the noise study, we meet the warranty from the manufacturer.
I'm concerned about the noise study. It seems like a lot of expense, I mean, we have a roomful of people here talking about the noise. I mean, I think they're the study.
The thing, let's see, let me think for a second. The
What is the noise study going to accomplish?
The issue that this council has to remember and deal with is, you had a turbine that was up, that was broken. Wind energy development came in and took down a uncertified turbine and paid off the debt. I have no problem doing whatever the council wants, and I will mitigate with everybody in this room. But it's, there was an economic decision made to pay a bond off and to build something that was better and had a better warranty and everything. And green development and wind energy development have stood by this project and put a hundred percent into it. We maintain it weekly. We, it is like a baby to us. It was here before I got here. We did all the adjustments we could, and I can guarantee this council that we are operating under what the other turbine is. I will work with the town manager, I will work with the council, I work with the finance director to come up with a solution. But it has to be a sustainable solution for the town and for everybody together. And we are not at any time dismissing anything that says here. I was asked to do a project, and I did exactly what I told you I would deliver. And I will stand up here every night, and I will meet with every single one of these neighbors. They can send their names through the town manager. I have a bunch of business cards. I've made myself available, my cellphone, so somebody can call me at two o'clock in the morning if they want to call me, all right? And we will work together with the town on solutions. That's one thing that I can guarantee you.
And we will hold you to that. Mr. Souza, or Tony, I know you've both been standing there waiting to make a comment. I don't know if you're waiting to make a comment or not. And a gentleman behind you who's
All right, yeah. Tony, I stood here three years ago and talked to this man, and he said everything he's just said now. And he said he would take care of problems. He said he'd come out to my house. That was done. I'm not calling him a liar. I'm not doing that. But he's saying he's going to come out to the house, and he hasn't come out in three years. He said he was. The young lady and him stood at this podium and said, look in your minutes because you'll find it. Said they could shut the thing down if it's bothering, you know, flicker and whatnot.
I found it.
But he said, before he does that, he'll come out to the house and look. I haven't seen him.
You will.
I haven't seen him. And he personally came up to me and said he was going to do it. And he also promised a couple of other things, too, that I'm not going to say right now. But, you know, it's not happening, that's all.
Yep. We will make sure that happens. Mr. Souza?
Yes. About a year ago, Mr. Kessner, I don't know if you remember, I came to you and you gave me their phone number to contact him on the noise. I contacted his office. They told me, we will look into it and we'll get back to you. It is a year later, and his company has not got back to me. I have documentation, time, everything, when I called him, and I called him three times. And every time, we'll get back to you, we'll go look into it, Mr. Souza, and we'll get back to you right away. And I have not got back. They haven't even came out to see if it even bothers my house. Now, he talks about doing a study. Okay, 10:20, the wind come out of the west, seven miles an hour, fifty-one point seven at 9:35. I went out and tested it. 10:21, southwest winds, two miles an hour, forty-nine point six at 9:24. That's why I was saying nine o'clock is a good time because it seems to me. And then I got the 2:30 in the morning, nine mile, southeast, nine miles an hour, fifty-one point eight at 2:30 in the morning. And that's what their study, they're going to come up with stuff just like what I have been doing and other people have been doing. But all I keep hearing out of them is, we do the study and produce, 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 produce. But what about our quality? All they're worried about is they want to get their electric and get their money. I can understand that. They put money out, they bailed us out on that bond. But you know something? We have to live with this. And I have done, and I got, if you want me to go on, the noise, the flicker, different times, four o'clock, eleven, October 11th, 10:17 flicker, and I did the study. I'm not coming to you just to say, no, it's bothering me, it's giving me a headache. I'm not. I'm at my wit's end. I can't deal with this anymore. And it's really, really, because this gentleman keeps telling me, well, it's going to produce, it's going to produce. Yes, we all have to mo, I have solar panels in my house. I hope the sun shines every day, but that's not going to happen. But my solar panels is not affecting anybody. If they were shining in somebody's eyes, that would be a problem. But they do not bother nobody. They're on the roof. I want them to produce as much electric as I possibly can, but I can't regulate the sun. They can regulate this flicker. They can regulate the sound. But they don't want to do it because it will cut down on their, what they're making in electric. So, they're not going to make as much money. But where to deal with it? And that's why North Kingston sued them and made them pay them a hundred and sixty dollars a month. And they have a mortuary that they can't put in there.
I just need to answer two questions to maybe clarify. There's a hundred and fifty dollars a month paid is the lease payment to the neighbors in the neighborhood. It had nothing to do with a lawsuit. There was a lawsuit, excuse me, sir, and you can go to the court, and I will give you something from the town, too. There was a group that was No Wind, North Kingston, and they targeted a few people in North Kingston Green before the turbine went up. And before those people even went, the neighborhood, the neighbors that were there were all part of it, and in their bylaws and everything, they each get a hundred and fifty dollars a month, all right? So, we hear people talking about taxes and different things. So, the lease payment at the turbine site pays each neighbor the fifty-four thousand a year is spread out within thirty people. Since, and I'm going to give everybody tomorrow a letter from the building inspector in North Kingston, since the turbine was up, up until six months ago, and today I'll get them to update it, there hasn't been one complaint in North Kingston with the turbine. So, we have sold, since the turbines went up, we have sold twenty-two homes, give or take one or two, the whole subdivision. We have sold them above market value, and the people in the subdivision are just as close, if not closer, to the neighborhood. But there was not a suit brought against me from the town at all. And that's what this gentleman is talking about.
And that's fine. And thank you for the update. But I honestly, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels, don't care about what's going on in North Kingston. I'm worried about what's going on at Fort Butzhill and the general vicinity. But what I do need you, Mr. DeBisquell, to do is to follow through with all of these people and work with Mr. Rayner, and then we are going to have an update. I'll give you a month. We'll come back in the first meeting in March.
That was going to be my next question.
And I want an update as to what?
I don't want to drag this out for a year to do a year study and deal with this in the summertime.
Nope. So, that all you people can come, you can feel free to come back on the 12th, or if you're currently satisfied with the progression that you're having, that's fine. But it will be on the agenda on the 12th for an update as to steps taken to mitigate the issues. This is the time of the year to do it. You guys don't see the flicker, I'm assuming. I don't see it as much in the summertime because the sun's higher and it's shining down. So, it's now through May, and then October through December, somewhere in that timeframe. I can't guarantee which the exact dates are, but.
So, my personal cellphone is 580-2060. My cards are here. The town manager can get you my information, md@green-ri.com. I'll leave these here if anybody wants to talk after the meeting. We are here.
Thank you, Mr. DeBisquell.
You're welcome.
Mr. Roberts. Are you waiting, hang on a second. Are you waiting to make a comment? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Peter Roberts, AD, I'm on Avenue. I just want to bring up a few things I've heard to point some things out. First of all, I'll go with the height and the length of the blades. Originally, what they were on our first one were reduced because of the wind gust in the area. It had nothing to do with anything else. It was because of what was going to happen with the taller blades, and then they raised this thing and put bigger blades on it. So, that was causing more problems in the neighborhood. After they put this up, it wasn't too long afterwards, they had another one exactly like this one in New York that the blade came off of and went a great distance, but luckily it was all fields. It wasn't any residential. That blade came off and just kept rolling around. And they put this one by a school and residential. That is completely wrong. Because, okay, the blade never come off, but if it ever does, it's going to be a disaster. And another thing, he keeps talking about, well, if lightning hit this, or if these drainages are clogged. And then he mentions that people are out here every week servicing this. Why don't they already know this? And if they're out here on a regular basis, why haven't they taken the time and the effort to check on all the noise and everything that's happening? They don't need people to call them and do this. This is their responsibility. They're supposed to do it so they can handle it without somebody complaining, and they have not done it. And another thing, these residents that live here, they have brought all this up in the beginning, all right? What happened with the other tower? And it hasn't been changed. So, they are not keeping track of it. And they're not checking things when they should be doing their maintenance. This is completely wrong. They are just hoping, well, nobody's going to complain, because they haven't changed anything, all right? And there's a few other things that he keeps bringing up that he's just keep going, like they came in, they took the old one down, and they did us a favor. No, they did it because they're making money on it. They would not have done this if they weren't making a good profit on it. So, every time he brought that up, it was getting a little deeper, you know? I mean, we can see it listed in any sales pitch, but I'd like to hear him admit that he did it because they're making money on it. Thank you.
So, Mr. DeBisquell, I want to, I think it is, I want to talk just a safety issue. There is a Goldwind turbine in New York that was manufactured in China, and the certification of the bearings were bought from different companies, all right? And the turbine that you have here is a turbine that was made in Germany, all right? So, the blade that fell off at this site that dropped to the bottom of the turbine, I was myself personally at the site after it happened to expect it, was the bearings on it. So, it's the same technology, but the turbine that we have, that you have in your town, was built in Germany with different, which was certified. That's why we went with Vences on that. The noise issue, a noise can be happening at night that we don't hear on an inspection. The guys come to the turbine, they shut the turbine off, they climb it. We look at the, we look at everything. So, if they hear a whistle or something, we might not hear it while we're here for an inspection. So, if somebody hears something and noise changes, then, you know, we would get a call or something. But we're going to look at that. There will be people there tomorrow, and there will probably be within the next seven days a blade inspection on the turbine. And you'll all notice that when that's happening. You won't miss it.
And you will be working with all the residents that are here and anybody else who, there was at least one gentleman mentioned he couldn't be here because he's not feeling well tonight. And we will expect you back here on the 12th, because there's only twenty-eight days in February. I could do that math. How about that? The 12th, four weeks from tonight. Thank you, Mr. DeBisquell. Any other questions? I, no, you're good? You sure?
Well, if this is a giant fail, it's on the town. Now, is a town, what's a town prepared to do if they can't resolve this?
If we can't resolve the noise issues and the flicker issues?
I mean, this thing's a big industrial plant on a stick.
Yes.
Basically. And we're not zoned for, I don't think that area is zoned for industry. And that's a big electrical generating plant. I don't think that any of these, the way it sounds, this is going to be resolved, except with the town saying, no, we're not going to do anything. What is, what is?
I would hate to speculate.
I mean, that's my question now. I mean, it's not this company's fault. They did exactly what they were asked to do, come in and replaced it. So, it falls squarely on the town and the taxpayer for this giant fail. But I guess that's my question. What will the town do? Is there, I mean, move the thing to Prudence Island, put solar panels on the two fields and all the schools would have probably generated the same amount of money. But I know it was ten, twenty years ago when this was all worked out, at least.
Ten. Ten, when the original
Yeah, so, I mean, it wasn't a good idea. These things should not be within a mile and a half of any residence.
No, they shouldn't.
So, I mean, it was pushed through. I can recall what was going through. I was kind of a little, I couldn't get involved with what was going on when it was happening.
That was the ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah. And it was such a great idea with the greening of Portsmouth.
But if you remember, it was supposed to be at the middle school.
Exactly. So, you know, as a taxpayer, property owner, and all that good stuff, you know, what's going to happen is my only question, which can't, I know cannot be.
We can't answer it right now.
Nobody can answer.
You know, to fairness to everybody on this council, well, nobody was on this council back in 2009 when it was placed.
It comes back to us, you know. And everybody has a legitimate gripe. But anyway, sorry.
That's okay. It's a legitimate question. I can't answer it. But we can't answer it now.
But it is loud. It does keep you up at night. It is like, you know, occasionally. Because, I don't know, is that thing on the drive shaft that drives only? So, I mean, there is a vibration if that thing gives off.
Thank you for bringing it for us. Four weeks, we will be back here for an update from all of you and Mr. DeBisquell, and hopefully we'll have some solutions and some, at least some paths going forward. We may not have final solutions, but we do expect an update in four weeks.
I could ask, everybody can call me, but I think it might be important that they contact the town manager. Just to be clarified, because I just had a conversation with somebody else in the hallway that we did meet two years ago. So, all what I will do is, is when they call me, I will send, make it even simpler, whoever calls me, I'll immediately forward an email to the town manager that I'm meeting with this person at this time and keep them so they can call me directly.
And if you call, if you reach out to Mr. DeBisquell and you don't hear with him, I'll give you 48 hours to respond to everybody, not 24, but 48 hours. Send an email to Mr. Rayner.
And just the, I have an email address, too, and what I will do is, is I'm going to give the town manager some contacts, all right? So, and I'll be out of town for seven days, but my emails are checked. So, if they call my phone or give me an email, and the office number's on here, so I'll give the town manager, and they can immediately reach out to Paul, the VP of Operations.
If you can give them to the clerk, because that's generally the first place people stop coming in, is to ask where to go, and they can save somebody a trip upstairs.
I just want to make sure somebody doesn't go in a direction that we didn't get the call. That's all.
That's okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I would like to move New Business Eight up to this
I would like to move New Business 8 up to this...
Want a motion to continue this section?
Let's, yeah, let's, a motion to put this on the...
All right.
314, 312 agenda.
I got that one. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now, motion passes 7-0. Now, we're going to, a motion from Ms. Pedro, is there a second?
To move New Business 8 to this...
Up to here.
Right here, so that these people can stay if they would like to listen to the next, because this has to do with...
New Business 8 is a request from Wind Energy Development to take the load that we are not purchasing because we upgraded all of our schools and the town buildings to LED and better lighting and better electrical, to take that energy that we're not purchasing directly and sell it off to the Rhode Island Convention Center. I personally, I would, I would like to wait the four weeks before we make this decision. I know that doesn't help you out tremendously, but...
Well, the request that's in front of you right now is in the agreement with us. So the contract with the Convention Center, the town manager asked this to be brought in front of you for a vote to sign it, but in the agreement, the town manager actually has the right, and you have to allow or you need to pay for that energy. So you're preventing a contract, and, you know, so it's really in the contract, we were here to just give him permission to sign something that's in your agreement.
Mr. Evans, can you confirm that? Is, can I, can we wait, can I, can we wait four weeks to sign this and not have the penalty?
I don't have the contract in front of me. I'm not going to answer that specifically.
I have the contract, but I guess...
I mean, we signed, we did this for Coventry. We don't want to, the town doesn't want to purchase more than we used, so we did the agreement with Coventry to let them sell...
I understand what the theory is, but this is a...
But we want to talk, you know, I think maybe if you want to have this discussion, we could have a discussion in executive session sometime, but I think we, well, you know...
My only thought process here, and don't take this personally, the only somewhat of a stick I have and/or carrot, whichever you want to look at it, is to hang on to this until he talks to all those people in the hallway.
Right, but that's just going to cost the town more money, right?
Yes.
Well, yes or no?
Yes.
That's your opinion?
It will cost us. We have a contract with WED.
That we're going to buy a certain amount.
We state in that contract that, in the original contract, we, they obligated, he had mentioned it, about 3.8, we're not consuming that much energy. Because of the way the contract was written for Portsmouth, we don't have to buy that, but it's going to, well, we're eventually going to get charged through the credits to National Grid. So the town council made this exact same sublease agreement with Coventry. We have since created, we have since executed more energy-saving upgrades to our buildings. We're still not consuming enough electricity, so now there's the ability to sell some of this excess electricity to the Rhode Island Convention Center, and then there's also another one that didn't make it in time for the agenda tonight. So I think we only harm the town if we don't sign it. There's no harm to the town if we do sign it. It's the exact same thing we're doing with Coventry now.
And ultimately, I don't see how this affects any attempt to mitigate the effect of the turbine on the neighbors.
Other than the fact it doesn't give him a place to sell the excess energy.
Right, but apparently he's already sold it to us.
That's not the case. What this agreement does, that they're asking the town managers to sign, is to allow me to change the Schedule B. So right now, the Schedule B is giving you the credits. So what's happening right now, you owe us money for energy that you cannot consume.
Right.
So there, without signing it, it's just going to keep building up in your account. So we have to balance the account. So there's two ways that we've discussed this. We've talked with the town manager that we are probably going to come back and true up once a year, so you don't end up with too much, and we can watch your account, but as you do your energy efficiency, we did the economics as a whole. So it's important that the Schedule B gets filed to stop the energy that's going from the turbine onto the town's account. And that's all you're doing is redirecting it. So what's happening, you're getting a credit building up. So if you don't redirect it, you really need to pay for it, and that's what you're signing for tonight. Now, for, to make the statement that to use that for me to come back, I think is ludicrous, because I've been in front of this council for a long time, and we've done a lot, and you have an $8 million asset sitting out there that we manage very well. So you don't need to hold something against it unless you want to pay for that energy, and I think it's a good solution for the town.
My concern is, and I believe what you're saying, but I have three or four residents out there who are saying that they haven't heard from you, and my concern right now is for those residents to have some sort of resolution.
I would ask the town manager how many complaints have been brought forward to us. I think that's, I think that's credible information.
And you know what? Until tonight, I haven't had any direct complaints to me either.
So, so we have a solution that...
But I'm just going by testimony that was here tonight, and my concern for those residents is that you're going to satisfy their concerns.
And, and we are here making a solution to look at everything that's happening, and I'm coming back next month, which we said we were, but to stop a contract and to let the energy continue to build up on your account, then you, like you're asking me to do what I promised this council we were going to do, the contract is what you promised. So instead of allowing that energy to go somewhere, you're either going to pay for it or send it someplace else. It's a less harm to send the power to another location than to let it accumulate. And I think we have 400,000 kilowatts extra on the town right now that we have to, we have to net out.
It's about 400,000 extra kilowatts of power. The way this works is we get these credits from National Grid. If we're not consuming the power, we got to pay WED. So this is what we did with Coventry. There's still more power that we need to shed so that we don't keep building up these credits, and the solution here is to sell these, sell this kilowatt, these kilowatt-hours to, in this case, Rhode Island, or Rhode Island Convention Center. And there is another one, as I stated, I can't remember, it's a nonprofit.
It's the Diocese.
Diocese is, they'll be next in the pile.
So let me understand, so we're selling our credits? No, we're not doing that.
We got to pay them for the credit. We're paid, we're obligated to pay 15.5...
Yeah, I understand that part, because I was there.
And then we get credits, we're getting credits, but we owe those credits to Green Energy.
And the thing...
And so, basically, they will be using the electricity that we're not using.
Correct.
And they will be paying for the electricity that we're not using.
Correct.
So that means that we won't be paying for the electricity that we're not using.
Right, but it would cost them 60,000, 60,000 a year or 12,000 a month, in round numbers.
And this, and this convention center was, out of meeting with the finance department and the school and everything, realized that there was a problem. What we did is, is this is only like a one-year contract to stop the energy, so you're going to build a new public safety complex, and we're monitoring to come to what the energy's going to be.
The energy uses...
So this contract for the convention center was to move that energy off of your books, because it just keeps accumulating. So I need to send it to another location so it's not being built to you. And that's, you know, one doesn't really have anything to do with the other, but...
So we will stop, so we already have some, some credits, but we're going to stop making more.
And then, you know, and this will vary month by month, and what we've agreed to do with WED, Green Energy, is we will true up the books. I think we agreed to once a year, at the end of every year, we'll true up the books, and we'll monitor it at regular meetings throughout the year so we don't build up these credits. Well, if we don't do this, we're going to keep building up credits, and we're going to end up owing money to Green Energy, because we got to pay them for the credits. That's the way the contract is structured.
Right, and if we do that, then we won't get the electricity, but we will have to pay them anyway. Is that what you're saying?
We'll have to pay for the credits.
Have to pay for the, oh, well, that's right, because the credits are already, I get it.
If you're only consuming, a simple way is, you're only burning 3 million kilowatt-hours, they're giving you 3.4. So once it's on your account, you're never going to burn more than 3 million. We know where you are right now, you're going to keep going down, so we need to peel off a Schedule B. And in the future, we are actually changing this, that we don't need to come to the councils in other contracts, because we need to do it every month to manage. So if we didn't have to come to this, the council for this approval, we probably would have did the Schedule B 30 days ago and avoided another 50,000 kilowatts over. So you already have enough for this year, what you're buying, you have excess. So what we're going to try to do is get you back to net zero, where you don't have extra credits sitting on your bill. That, that's really the logic to doing this, and then figure out where the town needs to be, and instead of you being locked into 3.2 million with us every year, we're going to look at it, keep you under what your consumption's going to be, and then after the, after the fourth quarter, we'll true up. If I owe you more credits, if you burn more power, you'll give us more money for the credits, vice versa. This way, you don't accumulate something that you're not going to use. And once they're in your account, there's no place else they can go. So we need to, we need to balance, we need to balance the credits so they don't keep
Ms. Ujifusa?
I'm just wondering, Mr. President, what, what you meant by trying to use this contract as a carrot or stick?
To make sure that he follows through with working with the residents.
No, but how would that, how is that possible? If we're under obligation to pay him...
Just to give us an extra 30 days, that's fine. If Mr. Rayner wants to go ahead and sign the, sign the sublease, I'll pine. But in four weeks, I'll come back here and we'll see, make sure the residents take care of them.
I agree that the residents have to be taken care of, but I just don't understand why not signing the contract today was an option you considered, that's all.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the sale of the lease agreement.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We will see you in four weeks. Some joy wherever you're going to next week, the next seven days. Hopefully someplace warm.
No, it isn't.
No?
No, it isn't. It's, no, it isn't. But I will, you'll definitely be getting reports from us, and you'll see a team out there inspecting the blades within the next seven days.
I'd really like to see a written resolution by, by mailbox.
Say that again.
I'd like to see on the council the resolution that you, that you basically agree with, with the property owners. I want to, I want some kind of a feedback.
Each property owner is going to be different.
I know, at least we'll know we're getting resolved. There's got to be some report to the council.
Oh, no, absolutely. There's absolutely going to be a very detailed report of exactly what we find. We'll probably, we'll, we're going to inspect everything, and we will run through everything, and I will meet with everybody. I've always been accountable for meeting with people from the first time that this was approved. I will assure you that we will address anybody that calls us, and we'll look at everything for you.
Thank you, sir. New business number four. We have a couple of rental agreements for July 14th and 15th for Beach Dogs Lacrosse, youth lacrosse games, and then July 23rd through the 27th to July 16th to 28th, 2018. That doesn't make sense, okay. They're backwards. So they're going to do July 16th to the 20th, and then July 23rd to the 27th.
No.
That's B. How about A?
Well, I'm looking at B right now, and so is...
Changing the date.
Changing the date, rescheduled, got it. Got it, thank you. I missed half of that.
I would make a motion to approve the request.
Both requests?
Both requests.
I second with comment.
Sure.
I'm prepared to vote in favor, but I just want to bring up the fact that some residents have complained to me that the stone walls in the Glen get damaged quite severely, to the point where it costs quite a bit of money to the town to repair them, and they, that, I was told that that happens typically during these, either soccer or lacrosse large tournaments. And I know you're nodding your head, so you've probably heard this as well, and I know it's difficult to enforce or take enforcement actions, but it seems like perhaps the staff could look into getting bonds or making more efforts to avoid the costs that we've been accruing to repair the stone walls during these kinds of events. So again, I'm not stating that this specific person or the applicant is at fault, but it seems like something that we need to look at to see what our options are going forward, so that would be my comment.
The only downfall to that argument is that we haven't incurred any costs, because we're not really repairing the walls right now.
Okay.
That's the only downfall, but I agree with you 100%.
We have paid once, but it's very minimal.
Really?
Can you work with, I think the best thing to do would be to work with Brian and Wendy.
We'll work with...
Wendy to get this through.
Actually, I think that there's probably ways we can at least document the state of the wall prior to an event, compare it to after the event, and we'll take a look at the way we write these agreements going forward.
Perhaps make it clear to applicants that, you know, the approval for next year, since they seem to be ongoing, may depend in part on how much damage is done.
I would only agree with that, Mr. Rayner, if the walls were new to start with, because they are really, really bad.
I know.
They progress to the point where they're embarrassing.
We're setting up training for DPW workers so that they can start mitigating this. We tried to set aside money as, as it's available. The sad reality is, kids are kids, and they don't care.
Well, adults are adults, too. Don't blame it all on the kids.
Well, that's true.
Well, I'm only repeating what constituents have to say to me.
Kids have parents, too.
Well, if you can get the crew that did the walls on Bremen's Lane for the new polo fields there, they're beautiful, crossing Peters Farm.
If we could afford it.
I know. It's a, it's a, I know, it's a beautiful job they did. Yeah, who knows? Okay, so, did we vote?
A and B, we're going to vote.
No, okay.
Not yet voted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. And now approval for Beast of the East to utilize the Sandy Point Lot for parking, and I'm assuming they'll have a shuttle up and down from the hill.
I've got one question.
Sure. Mr. Kessin.
Mr. Rayner, because we're supplying parking and obviously oversight, are we going to be responsible for any damage that's going to happen to these cars? Liability is going to pick it up?
That's a good question. I hadn't thought about that. Well, we've been, they're required to show proof of insurance. There is a fee, and we're following the school's model on this, but I can get back to you on that.
Right, but if they're going, but if we're going to charge, and I don't know whether they're assuming security, but if somebody backed into another car...
Yeah, they're, they're assuming a lot of tenants, but I'll get back to you. I don't know the insurance.
Make, make sure that they're, piece, that they're piece of insurance that carries us as an additional insured, covers all the town properties that they're on, that's right.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. Matt, been sitting there very quietly, all even moved chairs, though. We have a request to amend, amend Resolution 2017-0213, exemption of taxable real estate for certain income eligible senior citizens to the new schedule that is in front of us.
Just an annual adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index to, as far as the qualifications for the exemptions they get, pretty standard boilerplate.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Ms. Ujifusa, new business number seven, resolution concerning the Rhode Island Uniform Controlled Substances Act.
Right, this is the same resolution that we passed, or essentially the same resolution that we passed last year as a town council, and it's being proposed by Senator 70, and I believe Representatives Canario and Edwards on the House side, and it's to provide some And it's to provide some funding for the, the substance abuse problems that this community